Welcome, as begun.
Good morning, and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committees on Women and Gender Equity, together with Criminal Justice. At this time, please silent all electronic devices to vibrate or silent mood. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. I’m Councilmember Carolina Rivera, Chair of the Committee on Criminal Justice. Welcome to our joint hearing with the Committee on Women and Gender Equity chaired by Councilmember Caban. Today’s oversight hearing is on the treatment of TGNC-NBI individuals in custody and the policy recommendations made to create meaningful change. Before we proceed further, I want to acknowledge that we are here today because for TGNC-NBI individuals in custody, the violence, indignity, and trauma inflicted in jail is amplified. Trans and gender expansive people are over five times more likely than the general population to be sexually assaulted by facility staff and over nine times more likely to be assaulted by other prisoners and people incarcerated. Most TGNC-NBI people in custody do not live in safe, gender-aligned housing. And sadly, we also know that being trans or gender expansive in jail can be a death sentence. Today, we are joined by loved ones of Layleen Polanco, a transgender woman of color who tragically died of an untreated epileptic seizure she suffered on Rikers Island in 2019. And as we begin this hearing, I’d like us to observe a moment of silence to recognize and remember Layleen and all those we have lost. Thank you. At this hearing, the Committee on Criminal Justice will be hearing five pieces of legislation. My bill intro number 355 related to permitting individuals in jail to choose the gender of their doctor. Intro number 728, introduced by Councilmember Powers, Councilmember Caban, and myself, related to reforming housing decisions for transgender and gender nonconforming people in jail. Intro number 831, introduced by myself and Chair Caban, related to establishing a citywide resource navigator for women and gender expansive persons. Intro number 887, introduced by the public advocate, myself, and Chair Caban, related to establishing a citywide resource navigator. And Resolution number 458 by Councilmember Botcher, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Gender Identity Respect, Dignity, and Safety Act. As well as another bill in the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, Resolution 177, introduced by the public advocate, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign a bill that would mandate the Office of Court Administration to update the securing order form to include a gender X option. I welcome the public advocate, Mr. Williams, and Councilmember Botcher, who have joined us today to provide brief remarks on their legislation. Mr. Public Advocate?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As mentioned, my name is Jermani Williams, Public Advocate, City of New York. Thank you, Chair Rivera and Caban, and members of Committees on Criminal Justice and Women and Gender Equity for holding this important hearing. Nearly one in six transgender, gender nonconforming, non-binary, and intersex people have been in prison. Too often, departments of correction do not house TGNC-NBI people in populations consistent with their gender identities, and instead isolate them or place them in housing units according to the sex they were assigned at birth, regardless of whether it aligns with their gender identity or they have medically transitioned. While many assume that TGNC-NBI people, transgender women in particular, pose a threat to their cisgender peers, they are far more likely to be victims of physical, sexual, and verbal abuse while incarcerated. In 1979, the Department of Corrections created a special unit within men’s jail on Rikers Island to house transgender women and gay men. At this time, there was only one such unit in the country. Eventually, however, similar problems that existed elsewhere plagued the unit and was shut down in 2005. Perhaps the most well-known example of abuse and disrespect experienced by TGNC-NBI people incarcerated at Rikers is, as mentioned by the Chair, tragic 2019 death of Layleen Polanco, a transgender woman whom DOC refused to house in general population with cisgender women, who died alone in solitary confinement despite her known histories of seizures. It is possible Layleen would be alive today had DOC replaced her in a housing unit consistent with her gender identity. In the wake of Layleen’s death, the City Council passed Local Law 145, which commissioned the Board of Corrections to convene a task force composed of government representatives and advocates to examine issues of TGNC-NBI incarcerated people. In August of last year, the task force published its first reports detailing outstanding and devastating harms, abuses, and indignities facing TGNC-NBI people incarcerated in New York City jails. The indignities that people they face, the indignities that they experience while incarcerated often start at arrest, when the arresting officer incorrectly lists a person’s sector where assigned at birth and their, and the TG, and dead name in their paperwork. The inaccurate information is then repeated by the attorney drafting the criminal complaint. Additionally, there is no option for gender markers outside of the male, female binary. That misinformation gets led down all the way through the process, often leading to people to be misidentified, leading to assault, abuse, and trauma. In a majority of cases, the task force studied incarcerated TGNC-NBI people were not housed in units consistent with their gender identity. Of the 41 people whose gender identities the task force knew, 63% were housed in misaligned housing, including 58% of trans women and 100% of trans men. The task force also found that multiple transgender women had been removed from their gender-aligned housing units to the men’s jail as a means of punishment and/or control. Cannot be overstated how dangerous these practices is. The women who had been moved reported repeated verbal, physical, and sexual assaults and attacks, sometimes by the same person despite the victim’s reported assault. Also, DOC would even transfer cisgender women to the men’s jails as a means of punishment, and this disregard for the safety of TGNC-NBI people is absolutely unacceptable. Yesterday, there was an article in the city. According to that article, the administration have walked back programs made accurately and respectfully housing TGNC-NBI people, particularly trans women in city jails. It also says the administration has fired or pushed out administrators that pushed for TGNC-NBI people to be housed in facilities that align with their gender identities and effectively cut off any power or influence that the LGBTQ Affairs Unit would have to fight dignity and safety of LGBTQ incarcerated people. The unit now only employs one person, but the rest of the staff reassigned in protest, one of whom had suicidal thoughts because they felt powerless to intervene in abuse. I want to acknowledge the courage of whistleblowers and incarcerated trans women who told their stories despite risk of reprisal. Many TGNC-NBI people are incarcerated in New York City jails, particularly non-binary and intersex people, and people of overlapping genders identities, for which no data is available at all. My bill intro 0887 would require DOC to report on a monthly basis information related to individuals in DOC custody, whose gender identity is different from the sex they were assigned at birth, including TGNC-NBI people. DOC would also be required to report information regarding such individuals’ housing unit placements, denials, and objections to current housing unit placements and instance of violence against such individuals. Today, the Council is also hearing Resolution 0117, a resolution calling the New York State Legislature to pass. The governor to sign a bill that would mandate the Office of Court Administration to update the securing order form to include a gender X option. I thank the Chairs for hearing these bills today, as this information is vital to the task force and to efforts improving the living conditions for TGNC-NBI incarcerated city jails. Lastly, I do want to say as a cisgender, straight, a man of faith, who is Black and Caribbean, I want to note that we cannot legislate empathy or respect for TGNC-NBI people. That is a responsibility for all of us, and I want to make sure I am clear of I intentionally had to make sure I grew in many areas to understand and still have more growth to do. Hopefully, we can all acknowledge that with ourselves so we can protect everyone. Sometimes I think that’s something that’s sorely missing. TGNC-NBI people deserve the same respect and dignity as their cisgender peers, and this is not negating when they are incarcerated. Till DOC makes changes to ensure that city jails are safe for everyone, we will continue to lose valuable members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate, and for your bill in relation to reporting on gender identity of individuals in custody at DOC. Now, we will hear from Councilmember Botcher.
Thank you, the Chairs Rivera and Caban for holding today’s hearing, and to the committee and policy staff for your work preparing for today. My resolution being heard today calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Gender Identity Respect, Dignity, and Safety Act by Senator Julia Salazar and Assemblymember Neely Rozick, which would help ensure the appropriate treatment and placement of incarcerated people based on their gender identity. I want to thank Assemblymember Rozick and Senator Salazar for their work on this critical issue in Albany. It’s so important to also acknowledge the work of the task force and the years of experience and knowledge they brought to identifying actions this committee is hearing today. Finally, I want to speak directly to the New Yorkers who’ve had your gender identity ignored or actively discarded during your time in the criminal justice system in our city, state, and country. We’re here today to work for you, and I’m grateful to all of you who’ve bravely shared your stories to inspire this important work and to help force change. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Now, let me start an oversight hearing on TGNC-NBI individuals in custody by providing a little background. In the wake of Layleen Polanco’s death, the Council passed Local Law 145 that required the Board of Corrections to establish a TGNC-NBI task force to review policies and make recommendations to improve the treatment and housing of transgender, gender nonconforming, non-binary, and intersex people in Department of Correction custody. The task force includes representatives from city agencies, including the DOC and Correctional Health Services, as well as advocates, legal service providers, and formerly incarcerated individuals. Even as the pandemic ravaged our city, this task force worked tirelessly on a volunteer basis to put together a comprehensive report that should serve as a roadmap to change. I want to personally thank all the task force members for their continued service to New York City and for holding all of us accountable for ensuring everyone is treated with the dignity and respect they deserve. As this hearing progresses, I look forward to hearing more from DOC on how they plan to address staff practices and policies that too often create danger for TGNC-NBI people by placing them in gender-misaligned facilities; how DOC and CHS will improve access to healthcare, including access to gender-affirming surgery; and how reentry planning can be tailored to provide linkages to culturally competent services and programming. I also look forward to hearing directly from task force members and justice-impacted people, whose willingness to share personal and often traumatic stories is to be commended. As was illustrated yesterday in powerful reporting by the city, this administration has a long way to go towards protecting TGNC-NBI individuals in custody. I urge the members of the administration present at this hearing to show their respect for the brave individuals who are willing to share their experiences by remaining present as we take their testimony. Before I move on to Chair Caban for her opening statement, I want to acknowledge my colleagues on the committee who are present. We’ve been joined by Councilmembers Narcisse, Abreu, Gutierrez, Carr, and Botcher. Thank you very much. Now, I would like to invite Chair Caban to give her opening statement.
Thank you, Chair Rivera. Good morning. My name is Councilmember Tiffany Caban, Chair of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, as well as co-chair of the Council’s LGBTQIA+ Caucus. My pronouns are she/her. Welcome to all of you to this very important hearing. I’m very eager to dig into this vital topic. In my years as a public defender, I represented hundreds upon hundreds of clients who came through Rikers Island, many of them gender expansive, and have spoken in depth with gender expansive New Yorkers in captivity on assorted visits to the island since then. I look forward to marshaling my full breadth of experience and understanding in today’s hearing, drilling down into the details as deeply as possible, and hopefully uncovering some of the answers that the public deserves. Before we begin, I want to take another moment to acknowledge the presence of Melania Brown, the sister of Layleen Polanco, a trans woman who died a trans woman who died in captivity on Rikers Island in 2019. I regard every death in captivity as a murder at the hands of the captors, and we should be haunted as well by the story of Alyssa Rodriguez, who died very shortly after being released from Rikers, where she was sexually assaulted on more than one occasion. The memories of Ms. Polanco, Ms. Rodriguez, and too many others should deeply trouble our conscience and propel us toward any and every solution necessary to make sure not one more death is inflicted upon our incarcerated neighbors. Additionally, I want to recognize and thank the members of the TGNC-NBI task force for your contributions and your dedication. I know that while you were appointed, serving on a task force as a volunteer role, as was mentioned by Chair Rivera, that many of you do in addition to day jobs, often as advocates and attorneys, without compensation while experiencing compounded trauma and mistreatment. You’ve produced a groundbreaking and heartbreaking report despite the hardship, and we all owe you an immense debt of gratitude. And lastly, I want to address you, Commissioner Melina, and your associates. As you surely know, under your leadership, the DOC has acquired a reputation as something of a rogue agency, unanswerable to oversight bodies. According to the Board of Corrections, two of whose key meetings last fall you missed entirely, DOC recently revoked the BOC staff’s independent, real-time access to the jail’s security footage. And according to a 2022 report of the federal monitor assigned to oversee DOC operations that, under your stewardship, Mr. Melina, DOC has essentially, quote, “essentially eliminated the proactive and collaborative approach that previously existed, reduced its level of cooperation, and limited its information sharing and access in ways which inhibit the work of the monitoring team,” end quote. I’d therefore like to invite you, Mr. Melina, to take this opportunity to attempt to correct, rather than reinforce that reputation, by staying for the duration of public testimony so that you can hear firsthand from directly impacted people in the task force that painstakingly compiled this devastating report. With many thanks to Madhuri Shukla, my Legislative Director, Brenda McKinney, the Committee’s Senior Legislative Counsel, and Aisha Wright, Deputy Director of Finance, for their work on this hearing, I’d like to pass it back to you, Chair Rivera.
Thank you very much, Chair Caban, and thank you to everyone for coordinating to make this committee hearing happen. Now, I will turn to our committee counsel to address some housekeeping items, who will then administer the affirmation to the witnesses from the administration, who will then begin their testimony. Jeremy?
Thank you. First, as a reminder, today is an in-person hearing with the option of virtual testimony for the public. The committees will be accepting registrations for testimony throughout the hearing. Anyone who is attending the hearing in person and who wishes to testify in person should see the sergeant-at-arms to fill out a witness slip in the back, even if you are registered in advance online. As usual, we will begin today’s hearing with testimony from the administration, followed by Councilmember Q and A, and then move to public testimony. We will limit Councilmember Q and A, including comments, to five minutes. During the public testimony portion of the hearing, witnesses from the public will be limited to two minutes. As a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record. The committees will also be accepting written testimony for up to 72 hours after the hearing. Now, I will administer the affirmation to our witnesses. With us today, we have Louis Melina, Commissioner of the Department of Corrections, Sidya Sherman, Commissioner of the Mayor’s Office of Equity, Paul Scheckman, General Counsel, Department of Correction, and Jeanette Morel, Director of Communications and Intergovernmental Affairs at Correctional Health Services. If each of you could please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Seeing that all witnesses have answered in the affirmative, Commissioner Melina, you may begin your testimony.
Good morning, Chairs Rivera and Caban, and members of the Committee on Criminal Justice and on Women and Gender Equity. I am Louis Melina, Commissioner of the Department of Correction, and I’m joined today by the Department’s General Counsel, Paul Scheckman. Thank you for affording me the opportunity to testify today on this important topic. The New York City Department of Correction is committed to ensuring that transgender, gender non-binary, and intersex individuals, also known as TGNC-NBI individuals, in our custody are treated with dignity and respect and housed safely and appropriately. Historically, TGNC-NBI individuals in prisons and jails have been mistreated and have experienced higher rates of physical and sexual assaults than cisgender individuals. Victimizing a vulnerable population is cruel, but regrettably, throughout correctional history, it has not been unusual. I am proud that the department has been a national leader in developing safe and progressive policies for the placement and care of TGNC-NBI individuals, because New York City often serves as a model for other jurisdictions. We engage frequently with experts and stakeholders to ensure that our policies support the safety and well-being of TGNC-NBI individuals in our custodial care. In 2018, the department was one of the first correctional institutions to house individuals based on their gender identity. Since that policy was enacted, gender identity has always been based on self-identification. Unlike other jurisdictions, we do not require a diagnosis of gender dysphoria, a medical examination, or gender-aligned identification documents. In 2019, the department established an LGBTQ+ Affairs Unit to support LGBTQ+ individuals in our custody, especially TGNC-NBI individuals. This unit and the wide-ranging support it offers is unique among correctional agencies in this country. My testimony today is divided into three parts. First, I will begin by sharing some basic statistics regarding our TGNC-NBI population. Second, I will set forth some principles that guide the department in the housing and care of TGNC-NBI individuals. Lastly, I will address the legislative proposals on the agenda today. Let me start with some general information on statistics. Individuals who identify as transgender, gender non-binary, or intersex may apply to be housed in the Special Consideration Unit, also known as the SCU, a dormitory-style housing area located at Rosam Singer, a facility also known as Rosies. They also can be housed in General Population Unit at Rosies or in a male facility. Individuals receive access to programming and services that align with their stated gender identity, regardless of where they are housed. Final housing determinations are made on a case-by-case basis and taken to consideration where an individual states that they feel safest, as well as any management or security concerns. There are some approximately 50 self-identified TGNC-NBI individuals known to the department in our custody. And as you undoubtedly know, not all individuals who identify as TGNC-NBI choose to disclose their identity to the department. So it is likely that our TGNC-NBI population includes more than the approximate 50 individuals. Currently, 38 of those approximate 50 known TGNC-NBI individuals are housed in their requested gendered facility. This means they are housed in a female facility if they have requested to be housed there, or in a male facility if they have requested to be housed there. The remaining TGNC-NBI are in protective custody, mental observation housing, or other units as appropriate. Now, I will turn to the principles that guide the department in the way we treat and house TGNC-NBI individuals. First, department staff are expected to treat TGNC-NBI individuals with respect and dignity. Staff may not use transphobic, homophobic, or otherwise derogatory language in addressing or discussing TGNC-NBI individuals. They must respect an individual’s pronoun choice and preferred name. Any staff member who disrespects or abuses a TGNC-NBI individual will be subject to discipline. This is outlined in our policies and reinforced by department leadership, myself included. Second, TGNC-NBI individuals should be processed through an intake facility that is aligned with their gender identity. That means trans women should be admitted to Rosies, where cisgender women are admitted. This is subject on which we could use help from defense attorneys and the courts. Currently, the securing orders that we receive from court have only two gender identities, male and female. The result is that too often, trans women are identified as males and transported to our male intake facility at the Eric M. Taylor Center, also known as EMTC. This should not occur. Correctly identifying an individual’s gender at the outset assists us throughout an individual’s stay in our custody. Third, individuals should be housed in a facility consistent with their gender identity, absent overriding security or management concerns, living in gender-affirming housing with others who have shared experiences, provide support, community, and affirmation, and makes incarceration less traumatic. Moreover, as history shows, TGNC-NBI individuals face greater risk of assault, discrimination, and humiliation if placed in a housing unit that is misaligned with their gender. Simply stated, we recognize that sex assigned at birth cannot determine placement. Fourth, we will continue to operate a Special Consideration Unit to provide TGNC-NBI individuals the opportunity to live with others with shared experiences. However, it is not important, it is important to recognize that many TGNC-NBI individuals, excuse me, prefer to reside in general population in Rosies. Others prefer to be housed in a male facility. Their preference should be given great weight. TGNC-NBI individuals are not a monolith. Each individual has unique needs and challenges, and they differ in where they feel safest. In short, there is no one-size-fits-all approach to housing determinations, and our placement policy must reflect that reality. Fifth, as a presumptive rule, self-identified gender should determine placement, but it cannot be definitive. An inflexible policy or placement based on self-identified gender would present safety concerns for transgender males. They could be subject to sexual harassment, abuse, and violence if placed with cisgender men, and they typically prefer to be placed in a woman’s facility. Six, TGNC-NBI individuals should not be transferred out of a facility aligned with their gender for conduct that would not cause a cisgender individual to be transferred. We must be focused on treating all persons in custody equitably, regardless of their gender. Seventh, TGNC-NBI individuals should have access to the same programming options as cisgender individuals. The department provides unique and gender-affirming programs and service opportunities for TGNC-NBI individuals, regardless of where they are housed. We also provide TGNC-NBI individuals with an extensive LGBTQ+ reentry resource guide and seek to connect individuals to a network of gender-affirming community providers that can be accessed upon release. And we actively work closely with Correctional Health Services, also known as CHS, to ensure that TGNC-NBI individuals can access gender-affirming healthcare and meet their mental healthcare needs. Additionally, all TGNC-NBI individuals have access to toiletry and clothing items that align with their gender identity and gender expression. This year, we have added chest binders to the list of available items so that trans men and gender non-binary individuals can appear more traditionally masculine if they choose. Proper clothes and undergarments can decrease feelings of gender dysphoria and reduce incidence of self-harm among those who wish to use them. Finally, I would like to take a moment to highlight a few of the legislative items on the agenda today. Intro 728 would provide TGNC-NBI individuals the right to appeal denials of preferred placement and require that CHS and the Board of Correction participate in the appeal process. Neither of those entities, however, has expertise in classification, security, or jail management. Safe placement is the department’s job and must remain our responsibility. Moreover, the department already has a housing reconsideration process that allows TGNC-NBI individuals to seek review of their housing placement. Individuals can apply for reconsideration if they have been denied their preferred housing placement or removed from their preferred housing placement. The reconsideration process encourages individuals to provide additional information, including references and recommendations from community groups and our staff, which has not been previously considered and might support a different outcome. We must be open-minded enough to change our mind on placement when new information or changed circumstances call for it. Intro 831 would enhance a resource navigator program with the Mayor’s Office of Criminal Justice to assist women and gender expansive persons in locating appropriate reentry programs. I support efforts to expand available resources for both women- I support efforts to expand available resources for both women and TG NBI individuals who have experienced incarceration as reentry programs reduce the likelihood of recidivism. We look forward to working with the council to ensure that appropriate reentry services are available. Finally, Resolution 117 calls on the state legislature and the governor to enact a bill that would require the Office of Court Administration to update the securing order form to include a gender X option. We support efforts to expand the gender identity options on securing orders, as this will assist us in making appropriate housing placement for those coming into our custody. As I stated at the outset, the department has been a leader in the placement and care of transgender individuals, enacting groundbreaking policies that outpace other jurisdictions. That said, it is incumbent upon the department to continuously evaluate and update our policies to meet the evolving needs of TG NBI individuals and all persons in our custodial care, which to date are almost 6,000 people, and strengthen policies and directives where necessary. Ensuring a safe and humane environment for everyone in our custodial care is our highest priority. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today at this important subject.
Good morning, Chair Rivera and Caban and members of the Committees on Criminal Justice and Women and Gender Equity. I am Jeanette Merrill, Director of Communications and Intergovernmental Affairs for New York City Health and Hospitals Correctional Health Services, also known as CHS. I appreciate the opportunity to testify at today's hearing about the transgender, gender non-conforming, non-binary, and intersex Task Force Report and associated legislation. My testimony will provide an overview of the medical, mental health, and reentry services CHS provides to the TGNC NBI individuals in our care. At CHS, we are unequivocal in our belief that all people in the city's custody have a right to gender-affirming health care provided in a respectful and dignified manner. We know that many of our TGNC NBI patients have experienced adversity when accessing and receiving health care in the community, and we view every jail-based clinical encounter as an opportunity to provide the high-quality affirming care our patients deserve. We also recognize that there are opportunities to improve, expand, and enhance our services for TGNC NBI individuals, and this work is ongoing throughout our services. Shortly after becoming the independent healthcare provider in the city's jails as a new division of New York City Health and Hospitals, CHS began updating our transgender care policies and procedures using community, national, and international standards to promote gender-affirming care. We established a work group to create access, to ensure access to gender-affirming treatment, and to reduce barriers to care for our transgender patients. This includes building capacity to prescribe hormones within our service so patients do not have to seek care from off-site specialists, and ensuring that mental health involvement focuses on supporting an individual's treatment and care. The current transgender care policy and its associated care templates incorporate guidance from the World Professional Association for Transgender Health, Fenway Health, and the University of California, San Francisco's Gender Affirming Health Program. Guidance such as these help to advise our clinicians on how to appropriately counsel and care for transgender patients, starting from the new admission process. As part of the medical intake, CHS clinicians ask all patients about their gender identity, as well as their preferred names and pronouns. The information is documented in the electronic health record in order to inform the patient's clinical care, which may include the initiation or maintenance of hormone therapy. Like all of our patients, TGNC NBI individuals receive individualized medical and mental health services while in our care. Patients who identify as TGNC NBI during the new admission process or during subsequent clinical encounters are reviewed by our physician leader for gender-affirming care, who may refer these individuals to CHS's Special Populations Care Team. While CHS has worked to build transgender care capacity within our primary care workforce and throughout all clinical and nonclinical disciplines, we have also recognized the need for more specialized services for our transgender patients. We recently established an interdisciplinary team of caseworkers, social workers, and physicians to provide additional in-jail support, discharge planning services, and post-release follow-up for vulnerable populations, including transgender individuals. This team conducts regular case conferencing in order to discuss and coordinate the care of these patients who have unique clinical needs. This team is also in regular communication with the Department of Corrections LGBTQ+ Affairs Unit. Transgender patients who are interested in pursuing gender-affirming surgery would likely be referred to this interdisciplinary team. As a part of New York City Health and Hospitals, CHS works to support on an individual level gender-affirming surgeries within the system. Because the challenges in accessing gender-affirming surgery in the community are compounded by the challenges of providing care in a carceral setting, particularly the unpredictable length of stay in pre-trial detention, these surgeries may not occur as timely as our patients or our providers would like. We will continue to work diligently with our Health and Hospitals' community partners and with the department to ensure expeditious access to these surgeries. In addition to the medical and mental health needs of our patients, reentry services prove crucial to our patients' well-being. Starting at intake, CHS's Reentry and Transitional Services Team helps patients plan for a successful return to the community. For TGNC NBI patients, this may include referrals to New York City Health and Hospitals' Pride Health Centers and to other community-based organizations that specialize in serving this population. Transgender patients under the care of our Mental Health Service receive additional discharge planning services, and our patients under the care of the Special Populations Care Team will receive follow-up phone calls. We are actively working to develop more comprehensive specialized reentry services for this population, especially since in 2022, more than 38% of our TGNC NBI patients reported being homeless before incarceration or not having a place to go after jail. I will now turn to the legislation. Intro 355 would permit incarcerated individuals in city jails to choose the gender of their doctor. We appreciate that patients need to feel comfortable with their health care providers, and for many individuals, their comfort is dependent on being treated by a doctor of the same gender, especially when receiving reproductive and sexual health services. Building trust between patients and providers is incredibly important and proves particularly challenging in a carceral setting. Access to health care in jail can simultaneously be more critical and more challenging. CHS works to accommodate patients who feel uncomfortable or dissatisfied with their health care providers for whatever reason. Patients can contact CHS's Patient Relations Department to file a complaint or to seek a second opinion, and they can call our health triage line to speak directly with a nurse about any health care concern. However, we should also not create unrealistic expectations in the jail environment, where health services run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and where certain evaluations occur at unpredictable times, such as injury evaluations or emergencies. It is not feasible and may not even be possible to staff each service in all of our clinics and therapeutic housing areas with female, male, and non-binary physicians at all times. We remain committed to supporting our patients through the provision of appropriate and timely care, just as we remain committed to recruiting a diverse workforce. However, it would be unfortunate for a patient to experience a delaying care or to forego care because of a requirement for a provider of a particular gender who may not be available. Before closing, I would like to thank the Task Force for the significant time and energy they have invested in creating the report. We look forward to continuing our work with them, particularly as we develop more educational materials for our TGNC NBI patients. I'd also like to thank CHS's nurses, doctors, social workers, and other health professionals who care for our TGNC NBI patients. We're fortunate to have such dedicated clinicians to help us expand and improve our services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for using TGNC NBI language so we can be as inclusive as possible. Let's try to do that going forward. I also want to note that we've been joined by council members Hanif, Brewer, and Riley. Thank you to my colleagues for joining us. Okay. So let's, let's just start with a few questions about, about data. In your testimony, you mentioned that you know that there are 50 TGNC NBI people currently in your custody. When is this number from? Is it from 2022, most recent? Today's number. You said 38 individuals are housed in their requested facility with others in the Mental Observation Unit, for example. Can you explain that decision-making process?
Sure. So we have a...
This is my... Yeah.
My apologies. I have to mic off. We have, a person can come forward to express their gender identity and express a preferred housing location, and there is a Special Consideration Unit Housing that we have established at Rosies, in addition to possibly placing someone in general population housing at Rosies. And we have a determination unit that evaluates that person's application, takes a number of things into consideration, security, possibly infraction theory if that's available. We get input from CHS, LGBT+ unit as well opines and provides some insight on that, and a determination is then made. I would say that about 75% this year of those applications have been approved.
How many transgender women are in men's jails, and how many are in Rosies? And how many of, how many are there voluntary versus involuntary?
So to answer your, your first question about trans women that are in men's jail and how many are in Rosies, in our male facilities, we have more than 10, but less than 20. And with our, at Rosies, we have more than 20, but less than 35. And I speak to these situations in aggregate just to protect the identity of those in these facilities. As far as those that are involuntarily not in one of the preferred facilities that they're choosing, that number is 11.
And so that decision to, to not fulfill their request was made throughout with this group of people that you described, including CHS?
It's, it's made by the Determination Unit. CHS provides insight that helps guide that determination, but I think it's important to note that if new information comes to light, if additional information that the individual wants to put forward, there is a reconsideration process, and there has been times that during that reconsideration process that the decision was reversed.
How many non-binary people are in the men's jails, and how many at Rosies, and how many are there voluntarily versus involuntarily?
I think, given the low numbers, we would be placing ourselves publicly in a situation to outing individuals that may not want that publicly known, so I'm happy to talk to you offline about specifics about either individuals or significantly low numbers, yourself or anybody else in the council.
So even though they might be low numbers, you do have the numbers.
Yeah, we could talk about that offline.
Is this data shared with the Task Force?
I'm not sure if that may have been shared at the Task Force prior to my engagement. I don't believe that that number has been shared as of late with the Task Force, but I could follow up with you and determine if that was asked and if we did share it with them and at what points in time we may have done that.
I would appreciate that because from what we've heard from Task Force members, DOC reps have emailed the group but have refused to give the Task Force this data. So if we can help cultivate that relationship and make sure that we're not just complying with the legal mandate, but giving the Task Force the respect and the data that they deserve to do their job, I would note that intro number 887 is a bill to ensure that the administration is providing the necessary information to the Task Force. So can you and your team commit to giving this updated data to Task Force members on a monthly basis?
I can commit to evaluating the request, and of course, being open-minded with the goal of being forward-thinking as we have been since 2018. I mean, our practices far exceed probably many of the, significant many of the jurisdictions in America, so with that open mind, I would be open to taking that under consideration.
Forward-thinking is important, but so is transparency. So that's what I'm trying to ensure that we are codifying here today, that not only are we working together in a partnership, that we're fulfilling these requests so that way they can do their best work. So the Task Force report included a DOC directive that created, created a housing determination process for TGNC NBI people and guidelines for the Special Considerations Unit. And in your testimony, you mentioned how people apply for the Special Considerations Unit. Is this directive public? From what I understand, it's restricted and not public.
It is not a public document because there are security parameters guiding that document, so it is not public.
Why are even the people that are directly affected by it, the people in the jails, not allowed to see it?
Well, the individuals in the, in the jail, the, the applicants, I'll call them for consideration, are being given a form to answer questions to, to be given consideration. I will point out that prior to my tenure, that document was shared with the Task Force to help in the Task Force work, so we were good partners in providing the Task Force with that document.
How does the department expect compliance if people don't know their rights and obligations?
Well, people have been, individuals have been explained that they have a right for reconsideration a number of times if we do provide them with an explanation. As to our determination, we provide that to the individual. That individual, of course, has every right to exercise their right if they want to share that document with someone else, but we do not provide that determination document to third parties, but we would not discourage individuals to seek out any type of community support that they think would help guide our reconsideration process.
And from, from what I understand, housing reconsideration can only happen after 90 days?
Yes, because we don't want to have a situation where we have individuals just asking for reconsideration on a very, very frequent basis. We have six, almost 6,000 individuals in our custodial care, and we have to balance the entirety of the jail's ecosystem. We have a number of vulnerable populations that are even, that are outside of this group of individuals, and we have to keep everything within balance.
So trans women need to be held in men's jails for 90 days before potentially going back to Rosies?
It's, it's possible. When we make a determination of the appropriate housing, it's possible that the appropriate housing determination could have been a male facility.
Well, I, I think we all can understand how problematic that can be, so I know we have questions from my colleagues on this, but I want to ask about the status of, of the updates to the directive because in the article published yesterday by the city, you were quoted as saying you had set up an internal committee to update policies for TGNC NBI people in custody. Can you tell us who this committee is comprised of?
So we have a Policies and Procedures Unit, as you know, and as the monitor has said publicly in his reports, that we have had a significant sea change in the leadership of this department, which is a positive, was, was positive, the monitor's point of view, as we tackle a number of challenges and issues facing the department. So in addition to our Policies and Procedures Unit, we have significant change in senior staff from our senior deputy commissioners and our deputy commissioners, many of whom have experiences managing not only these types of issues and policy discussions, as well as other junior persons within the department that will be on that committee to evaluate not only this directive, but a number of directors that affect hundreds of people that are in our custodial care.
How many TGNC NBI people are currently working on the directive?
Well, I don't think it's my place to out those individuals if they themselves have not publicly identified themselves that publicly. I think what I can tell you is that the individuals there, part of that group have a varied of life experiences that are relevant to us making an informed decision if the policy or directive needs to be changed.
Well, no one in the, in the Task Force or in, in your custody has that privilege, so I wanted to ask to ensure that for the sake of inclusivity, that the Task Force and, and the directive specifically was representative and reflective of the work that needed to get done. Will the department be sharing drafts of the directive with the Task Force for input and advice?
That's not my intention, no.
Why?
Because I think the individuals that we have selected represent a body of work that balances not only the needs of a vulnerable population, but understands security, classification, and a number of other subject matter expertise that the Task Force doesn't have.
How will you seek input from TGNC NBI people, leadership, the community itself?
Well, we engage with experts and stakeholders all the time to have very frank conversations. We have members within our own department that are also members of that community, so we get voices of expertise from a number of areas.
The DOC LGBTQI initiatives unit... The DOC LGBTQI initiatives unit has lost three of four employees in the past year. What is the total number of staff at present?
For that particular unit, we have one executive director that is still on staff. We have vacancies in that unit, as well as we have vacancies in a number of business units within the department. Our challenges with attrition across the board for both uniform and non-uniform staff is not unique to the New York City Department of Corrections. And people in a, in a, in a professional job move on to do other things.
So right now, there's currently one staff member, the director?
We have one executive director, but again, there are a number of individuals from the TGNCBI community that serve in a number of capacities within the department. So even though we have only one person specifically in that unit, which is very at its core mission, programmatic and community engagement based, other business units within the department also have a voice in that. And I think when we think about the leadership of the department as it is today versus what it was, we have a leadership that not only infuses a significant number of, of individuals with varied experiences and talents outside of New York City. And what we're talking about really is a cultural sea change in really the thinking of the entirety of the department and also the culture of the department's thinking. And I think that's at heart of where you get to a position of normalcy in managing a number of vulnerable communities that are placed in our custodial care.
I think a, a cultural sea change would be welcomed at the Department of Corrections, there's no doubt. I mean, it's, it's deeply dysfunctional. I know you're trying to manage the situation as, as best you can, but it is troubling on almost a, a daily basis. Will, will, will DOC commit reestablishing a steady point of contact when public defenders or others in the community need to report emergencies regarding housing placement?
Well, we have that now. We regularly receive communications, in the majority of times email communications, that go to my staff members that are responsive to either advocates, sometimes their attorneys, on behalf of individuals that they're advocating for or possibly representing to either be given reconsideration or to have maybe a health and welfare check on a particular individual or to address a particular incident that may be occurring. We also have three one one, we also have the Office of Constituent and Grievance and Services. That is also accessible to those that are in custody. So there are a number of avenues in which advocates, individuals themselves, concerned community leaders can communicate with the department and get a response.
Does the department intend to give members of the LGBTQI initiatives unit input on housing decisions? I know right now there's a sole employee left within that unit until you rehire individuals or actually hire individuals. Well, do they have input on housing decisions?
Yeah, so they have been part of the determination unit discussions. And similar and alike to correctional health services, they provide input as to their position and observations and engagement with the individual that's being given a determination as to the appropriate housing.
Is DOC still operating the ambassadors program?
So we have ambassador training that, that happens in service training with staff. I can follow up with you to let you know how many of those individuals we have in place. I don't know the number off the top of my head.
And how many uniformed officers participate, if you can give me that? What actions is the department taking to ensure members of this unit are treated with dignity and respect at work?
Well, it's my expectation that all members of our department treat each other. Contract providers, volunteers, persons in custody, anyone that we engage with the public with dignity and respect. We do that also by a number of training, some required by decaf, some internally, inclusivity, working with vulnerable populations. So it is an ecosystem that I support where we have individuals treating people with dignity and respect. And when we thought about, when we actually enacted, because it wasn't in place, our organizational health strategy, it was important for me to ensure that our staff were not only supported, but that the support came about in a very dignified and respectful way so that we can achieve the best of all of our employees, both uniform and non-uniform, and provide an environment for those contract providers and volunteers and faith-based leaders that come into the department to be able to engage with our vulnerable population.
There was a recent report by the New York Civil Liberties Union that said ninety-five percent of trans and non-binary people in state correctional populations are actually harassed or called names by staff. And so we want to ensure, I know you are putting forward a culture of inclusivity and respect, but that sort of data is troubling. So to ensure that you are reiterating that policy and, and have a workplace of respect and dignity. So I just want to thank Niklu for taking the time to ask those questions. I'm just going to ask about one more thing. We have a, a couple of members and of course Chair Caban is going to be asking questions. I want to ask, as was noted in the report, when the TGNC NBI task force was formed, the death of Leileen Polanco was at the forefront of the public conversation. I do not invoke that name lightly, but it was, it's an important, it's important to mention that in the BOC investigation that followed her death, we learned that Ms. Polanco, who came into custody with a history of epilepsy and seizures, was placed in punitive segregation and went unobserved by DOC staff for stretches of time, fifty-seven minutes, forty-seven minutes, forty-one minutes, during the period between when she was last confirmed alive and when in a medical emergency was declared. One of the reasons we know this information is because BOC was unencumbered in their ability to view Genetech video of the housing unit where Ms. Polanco died. And as of last week, these policies have changed and become more restrictive. Access to video by BOC was severely curtailed by the Department of Correction. BOC's investigations into deaths in custody do not focus on criminal wrongdoing or individual fault. Instead, they seek lessons to learn from to help make sure no one else suffers that same fate. So Commissioner, when the stakes are this high, why choose to restrict access to video footage? Would you not agree that the independent oversight and the reports produced by BOC can be helpful to identify areas where the department's procedures can be improved?
So I'm a big supporter of oversight bodies. That's why when I came on board in January of two thousand twenty-two, I was highly disturbed and aggravated that the Board of Corrections for two years didn't once visit Rikers Island. But instead chose to stay home and work remotely and just collect a paycheck while uniform and non-uniform staff that worked at the department came in every day during a global pandemic to manage a very vulnerable population. As it relates to the, the real-time access of video footage within a department, what I did was align our rules of engagement with the Board of Corrections with the city charter. So they have access to view these videos at our headquarters facilities. We have set up stations and offices where they can view that in private at their, when they like to come during business hours to do that. If there are exigent circumstances where they need to see something very quickly, we will make sure that that office is available to them to view video.
I, I understand you, you've changed the protocol to be aligned. I laid out an example, a very serious example of why we feel, of why we feel the access previous to this change in protocol was important. During this time that we've been asking questions, you haven't really mentioned working with the task force either. And so I ask that, you know, on behalf of the Committee on Criminal Justice, I, I sincerely hope that you give us a reason to believe that you look forward to working with them moving forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague. Thank you for answering my questions, Chair Caban.
Thank you. I'm going to start by talking a little bit about the, the policies and directives, following up on some of Chair Rivera's questions. But I did want to start with a simple one, well, a couple of simple questions, hopefully from both your follow-up on your testimony, as well as some of the answers that you have given here thus far today. You mentioned in your testimony that there are, that you discipline corrections officers who violate policies surrounding, you know, queer and, and gender expansive folks on, on Rikers Island. Can you tell me how many disciplinary actions or proceedings has taken place since you have been Commissioner of DOC?
Thank you for the question. So in January of last year, I inherited nearly four thousand backlog of disciplinary cases that went all the way back to two thousand and seventeen that vary in, in a number of areas of policy violations. What I've done is I have adjudicated and closed out over twenty-six hundred disciplinary cases in one year.
Commissioner, I'm just asking that you focus on the, my, my question. My question is specific numbers about disciplinary proceedings that resulted from violations of specifically those policies. I don't want the larger number of the entirety of disciplinary proceedings. I want ones that are pertaining to these policies.
I don't have that number in front of me. We would have to audit thousands of cases to try to get you that number, but we can look into seeing if you could do that.
We would certainly like them. I think the reason for that, Commissioner, is because we would like to see if there's a disparity between the testimony that we're hearing around what people are experiencing every day versus the number of times people are being identified as breaking those policies and held accountable for them and getting the kinds of actions that change behavior going forward so that we're not continuing to traumatize gender expansion folks, expansive folks on, on the island. So that is my, my reason for asking, I would love follow-up on that. You also mentioned in your testimony that you are a, a, a big fan of oversight. And so I just wanted to ask you, I know that one of your first actions as Commissioner of Department of Corrections was to fire Serena Townsend. And you, and I just want to ask, have you, have you filled that, refilled that position?
That position has been refilled.
Okay, and who holds it now?
Deputy Commissioner Manuel Hernandez is the Investigations Division Deputy Commissioner. Deputy Commissioner Solange Gray is a Deputy Commissioner overseeing the Trials Division. That unit was put into so that we could have proper checks and balances, not only in our investigations process and really timely and meaningful discipline in our trials process. None of which those two things were happening when I took over the department. In fact, under this team's leadership, the federal monitor finally moved us into partial compliance in that area, which had not been done years prior.
So you went a different route. It's not that, that independent position, but somebody that was brought in internally. So I, I want to follow up on another thing that was mentioned by, by the chair. Let me just find your, the answer you gave here. Okay, so you were asked about the LGBTQI plus initiatives unit. I know that in, I believe it was two thousand twenty-one, there, there were four, lost one member. So you had a vacancy going into two thousand twenty-two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so that vacancy was never filled in two thousand twenty-two. And so the, the three of the four remaining personnel as part of that unit, in the span of less than a year, you lost two members of, of that unit, correct?
They resigned.
Okay, and so I, I know that your testimony that you gave when asked about these positions and, and the vacancies was a general answer around how it has, across the board, been hard to recruit, hire, and maintain personnel, municipal employees essentially, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so, so I, I just want to push back on that a little bit because again, thanks to some, quite frankly, really incredible reporting by the city recently, two of those members spoke out about their experiences. And what was stark about that was that they, they communicated experiencing on a different scale, but many of the same microaggressions, not so microaggressions and discriminations that gender expansive New Yorkers, whether incarcerated or not, experience every single day. And they felt that because of that, and because that they weren't getting a seat at the table and being taken seriously in those meetings, despite having personal experience and being directly impacted, that that was the reason they left. And that seems pretty different than sort of just the general challenges of being able to not maintain municipal employees because of flexibilities around remote work or pay. That seems like a, a really targeted and specific cultural problem that the DOC needs to fix. Would you agree?
No, I would not.
Okay, I'm going to move on from there. I am looking forward to hearing from the task force directly. So I also want to ask you in terms of the policies and, and directives, following up again on, on some of the chair's excellent questions is, how does the, the chair asked about the task force report and that directive that created the housing determination process and the guidelines for the SCU. I know that we covered, you know, why, your reasoning why it's restricted and not public. But how does the department expect compliance if people don't know their rights and, and obligations?
Well, the individuals are provided with an application that's pretty, I would call very open to provide them a place for us to be able to consider their housing determination. They have access to not only uniform staff that can help guide them if they want that. They also can engage with other individuals who they feel can advocate on their behalf for guidance. They can submit recommendations, references in support of that application. We have our LGBTQ plus unit, which is also available for assistance if they so need it.
I'm, I'm glad that you mentioned the LGBTQ plus unit. It's a good follow-up to the, the answer you just gave in respect to compliance and people knowing or not knowing their rights or obligations. In that same city article that I referenced, there's an email that they obtained from the Department of Corrections that said it, it is responsibility of all staff to work with LGBTQ plus individuals and argued, memorialized in an email arguing that the lack of interaction, admitting to a lack of interaction and access with the LGBTQ plus unit was not an indication that gender expansive folks and, and the queer community's needs aren't being met. And it begs the question that if that were the case, why does the unit exist to begin with? I think, I think that, you know, the reason why something that is, is, is built like that is to address a need. And it's under the theory that, you know, there's only so much you can do with a certain amount of supplementary training for an officer that's doing sort of genuine, general population work and that there is a need for access to folks with, with a larger base of knowledge, experience, and training around the needs of the LGBTQIA plus community. So why, why is it that there is this stark lack of access and, and interaction between the LGBTQ plus unit and LGBTQIA plus incarcerated New Yorkers?
I don't believe that there's a lack of that.
Despite having, despite there being an email from the, from the Department of Corrections acknowledging that, that interaction isn't taking place?
I don't, I don't have the email in front of me. And I think when you read an email, a lot can be put in or not put in or taken into an email depending on the context of the conversation. But in, when I've had the opportunity on a number of occasions to listen in on that process of determining, the voice of the LGBTQ plus unit was on there. We had other subject matter experts from a number of areas, to include Priya, Voice of Concern. And I felt that the conversations that I have overheard were very robust with everybody wanting the best for the person that was asking for this special consideration.
Okay, and so I, I know Chair Rivera asked about the, the, the policy directive that we can't see. I want to expand on that a little bit and ask about the trainings mandated by the directive. So what's the current status of the staff trainings mandated by the directive? Are they, are they happening? Is there any formal evaluation or feedback form to gauge if participants are finding the trainings helpful or if they have any impact? And then I'm going to ask again if it's possible for the task force or the council staff to review one such training. I, I know that you said you would. I know that you said you would have to think about providing the directive itself. But what about the training that's mandated by the directive?
So we have a number of trainings. Just give me, I'll read you the list. So let me just read you some of the trainings that we do have. In addition to de-cas-driven training on inclusivity and having a respectful workplace, we have respectful LGBTQI+ classification training that's done with our staff. We have pat fris searches for special populations. Previously, it used to be called our cross-gender and transgender pat fris searches. We have pride ambassador training. We have gender-respondent, trauma-informed, gender-responsive approaches in DOC operations training. We have training that we do for our visit process. We have a power of inclusion training and Everybody Matters, an equal employment, opportunity, and diversity inclusion training, which is provided for all New York City's employees. We also have Prison Rape Elimination Act, not only initial training, but refresher training that happens with the staff as well on a regular basis.
And I just want to make sure you answer the entirety of the question. Is there a mechanism for a formal evaluation or feedback form?
That's a good question. So we recently hired a Deputy Commissioner of Training, which has over two decades of law enforcement training and training
I'm going to hand it over in like two minutes.
Tens of thousands of law enforcement officers. And he is developing a mechanism, not only for this training, but to get survey feedback on all of our training in the department, to make sure that it's in alignment for the students that are experiencing that training, meeting sort of not only their learning objectives, but also if they have input in areas where we might be able to advance that training. And that input may be because of these students' lived experience. That's something that we may or may not be aware of. We can take that into consideration.
So just for the record, to be clear, it does not exist currently. You're in the process of doing such a thing. And again, I want to urge and make sure that part of that process is that participants are providing critical evaluation and feedback on these. And then the last question is the request of, can you provide us with sort of the details around the different trainings that you have listed so that we can see them and review them?
Yeah, I could share with you the training titles. That's fine, and the descriptions of what the trainings are.
Thank you. I know that my colleagues have a lot of questions. I have a lot more questions, but I want to make sure that they get some time to do that. So I'll hand it over now, and I look forward to a second and maybe a third round.
Thank you so much. I just want to reiterate, you know, having one person in a unit that is incredibly important to the decision-making process, recommendations, having that sort of inclusive coalition of people with vast experiences and talent, it's important. And I know you've mentioned that there is, there are hiring issues across the board in the city. We understand that with the municipal workforce. But this unit in particular, and what has happened, there needs to be change and there has to be progress. So we just want to, that person in the unit, you've mentioned disciplinary records, particularly related to those with interactions with our TGNC NBI population. That's going to be important to get back to us on. I'm only reiterating this because in the past, we have asked for data. We're still waiting on data from previous hearings. And I want to ensure that transparency and the partnership improves going forward.
For the record, ma'am, Madam Chair, we've provided you with all of the data requests to your office and your team. I don't know if your team maybe haven't provided that to you, but we don't have any outstanding data requests that we owe your office.
Okay, we're going to ask you, this is not the topic of this hearing, but in addition to some of the contracts with how we're converting to digital, contracts with certain providers and things that related to previous topics, I will be sure to make sure that I have all that information. And if it's all in, I will correct myself publicly. But the relationship has been challenging and frustrating in relation to transparency. So that's how I feel. I'm saying it publicly. I think many people know that, and that's been my experience. The other thing I will say about BOC and your answer of you being now aligned with the Charter, that is some information that, if you can give me more details as to the decision-making process going into that. You mentioned BOC's failure to appear at Rikers during the pandemic and sitting back and collecting a paycheck. And while I'm not going to comment on that, and clearly, the relationship between you and BOC is important. They are an oversight body. Their access to that footage is incredibly important and has shed light on tragedies that have occurred on Rikers Island in which we desperately need change to save lives going forward. So if we have to codify, going back to the pre-protocol change, we will through legislation. So we will explore that. I know my colleagues have questions. I want to go to Councilmember Botcher first, and then Narcisse Hanif, and then Stevens.
Thank you so much. In your testimony, Commissioner, I didn't hear you weigh in on the resolution I introduced in support of the state legislation, the Gender Identity Respect, Dignity, and Safety Act, unless I missed it.
Is that Resolution 117?
No. 458.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll read that resolution and follow up with you on just my thoughts on it. Once you have some final language on what that resolution looks like. Happy to engage with you on it.
Essentially, just expressing support for the state bill. Are you familiar with the Gender Identity Respect, Dignity, and Safety Act?
Yeah.
You are.
Yeah.
What are your views on that bill?
I think in support of, in what I know about the bill at this moment, I just have to take into the operational implications of the bill. And I just need more time to sort of digest operational insecurity concerns that may be unintended consequences of that bill. So I'd like to be able to have more time to give you a more thorough answer on that. And I can do it offline with you, Councilmember.
Okay, does anyone else on the staff have any opinions on that bill? Any more granular knowledge about it?
No.
Okay, maybe during the course of this hearing, you could get back to us with something about that bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We're going to go to Councilmember Gutierrez before Narcisse. Councilmember?
Thank you so much, Chairs, and thank you both for being so thoughtful with your questions and your leadership. I have two questions. Commissioner Molina, I'm a little disheartened at the negligence of this task force and their recommendations and their year-long commitment to improving the conditions at Rikers and your agency's negligence of wanting to work with the task force. So I want to know specifically, what of their recommendations do you deem as unhelpful that support your negligence to work with them? In your testimony, point six, you say you want to focus on treating all persons in custody equitably, regardless of their gender. One of their housing highlights says, yes, we believe that individuals in custody should not be housed or disciplined based on additional factors that would not be considered for cisgender people in custody. I believe that that supports your claim. So I'm curious, what about their recommendations you think is not helpful to your department improving conditions for these inmates?
When I first came into office, I offered to meet with the representatives from the task force to hear their concerns. They declined that meetings. Since then, the task force has issued an extensive report after a number of years, outlining their concerns, concerns around their need for personal financial compensation and other recommendations, which I have reviewed and which I have responded to accordingly. I have a trusted representative on the task force who can address issues as they arise during the task force meetings, and that person brings these issues to my attention if warranted.
But that doesn't explain the work that they've been doing for years, which is recommendation, which is identifying with this community. That doesn't answer the question of what of the work that they've done do you deem as unhelpful or unqualified to integrate into your agency to improve the conditions for this community?
We frequently engage with experts and stakeholders to evaluate our current policies and identify areas that warrant change. Many of the recommendations throughout the task force's report were developed over the course of the past three years, and many have already been incorporated into our policy.
I know that they're going to testify, and I hope that they'll bring up what their experience has been, but I disagree with that. My last question is, in your testimony, you also mentioned that staff members are expected to treat TG and BI individuals with respect and dignity. I just want to clarify why they are not, or understand why they're not mandated as opposed to expected, and what are the consequences for DOC officers when they do not do that? That was not made clear to me.
All right, so let me make it clear now. It is my expectation that all persons in our custody, individuals, coworkers, contract providers, or any member of the public that our DOC staff come into contact with, treat people with dignity and respect. And we have policies and procedures where if they are in conflict with that or are acting in a way that is undermining what this department mission is or persons in their profession, then we take disciplinary action. I'm a person that believes in accountability. And clearly, from 2015 to 2021, we didn't have that in a department as I inherited over almost 4,000 disciplinary cases for infractions related to a number of issues that were not addressed for eight years.
So talk to me about what this plan looks like since January of 2022, under your leadership.
I'm happy to do it. We, I have closed out and adjudicated over 2,600 disciplinary cases for disciplinary action violations going back all the way to 2017.
But they're not specific to disciplinary action for officers that have directly been in conflict of that policy to members in TGNC NBI?
They may be, I don't know that off the top of my head right now, given that I had to close so many thousands of cases.
Understood. Okay, my last piece, since I have 39 seconds, is, again, disappointed that this task force exists and is completely being ignored in reading their report and hearing your testimony. I believe that there is so much to gain. I think that it is a disservice to imply that the only experts are the folks in uniform who may identify with this community, but I think it's a complete disservice to neglect this entire task force, who have lost family, who have been committed to this, and yes, are volunteering their time. Not enough folks assigned to task force make any money.
They made that very clear.
I hear that. Thank you so much, Chairs.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Public Advocate Williams. Narcisse, followed by Councilmember Stevens.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here. And thank you Chair Kalina Rivera and Caban for opening that conversation and looking for transparency and to address the inequities wherever we are in New York City. So Commissioner, thank you for having you again, seeing you again. But the task force seemed to be a problem because if we have a task force, it's to give recommendation. And when task force give recommendation, it's for us to listen and try to do the best we can to address things that are not being done. So one of my questions, how do DG and BI go about requesting a housing transfer in and out of Rosie's? And how long the process take and what is it entail?
So a member that self-identifies with gender identity and requests for a preferred housing assignment fills out an SCU application, which is a Special Consideration Unit Housing Application. It is expected that within three days of that application being received, we have meetings regularly throughout the week for consideration of those applications so that we can give a determination typically within three days to that applicant as to our decision, whether it's approved or we've come to a different conclusion where we think the appropriate housing unit, they want to stay at. They're also given an opportunity, if the determination unit does not approve that request, to be able to put in for reconsideration and provide this determination unit with additional information that may not have been available or shared at the time the SCU application was taken under consideration.
What, can you tell me a little bit of the reason that the application would be denied or not going through?
There's a number of reasons. You know, that decision is made with security, correctional classification, things to take into consideration, Prison Rape Elimination Act guidelines. And on rare occasions, we may have information from the applicant themselves that they may be just trying to get into a preferred housing unit and really has nothing to do with their gender identity.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. We've been joined by the public advocate who was on stack to ask questions. Mr. Public Advocate?
Yes, thank you so much. Appreciate that. At first, I want to, I always try to come at this knowing my context. And so I always say, as a cisgender, straight, black man who is of faith and the Caribbean, I always recognize the growth that a lot of us have to do and intentionally do that. And that's my concern. Sometimes if we don't make that marker, then we don't intentionally move where we need to. And I always say, I like to say, you don't have to be racist to move forward a racist paradigm. I don't have to necessarily be transphobic or misogynist to move forward a system that's based in harming transgender and misogynist systems. And so if we can all acknowledge that, I think it gives us space to grow. So my issue is, it seems that what was put in place to help protect the TGNC NBI community and the LGBTQI community seems to be less than before. And so I just wanted to know, one, the LGBTQI unit, is there less staff now than there was in the prior administration?
There is less staff now than was in the prior administration, but we have less staff now in a number of business units, not just that one.
So you think that one is less staff now in commensurate with the amount of staff we've lost altogether?
I think it's a contributor to that. I mean, we have lost significantly more staff, even percentage-wise, in other areas within a department. People make decisions and they move on professionally.
It seems to me there's a population that seems to be harmed more than others. You may want to put that into consideration as well. The city mentioned a directive that was shelved. It was a draft policy directive that helped get people into their gender-assigned housing. Was that directive shelved or it wasn't, or you're aware of it?
I don't know if I would use the word shelved. I think that when we have our policies and directives in general, there are times where individuals might make recommendations for consideration in moving to the policy in a different direction or adding things to it. And we have done that in a number of directors. And in some occasions, we have maintained the directive as is. So we're always happy to take recommendations from our staff and others to give consideration to points of view that we should take under advisement as far as a directive. But the directive as which it stands right now, I think, is significantly progressive than any other process in any other jail or prison in America.
I think that's indicative of how bad everything else is, not always how good we are. But...
Somebody has to start, though, Public Advocate.
I hear you. I do, and so I want to acknowledge a start, but also acknowledge how bad it is everywhere else. I also wanted to ask your perspective. It seems that the unit had more influence previously and has less now. Is that correct?
I would not frame it that way. I mean, listen, I can't, you know, understand... understand a person's individual viewpoint that they might have perceived themselves having more influence or more in a particular period of time. We've known each other for a very long time. I'm a very inclusive person. And I have a number of staff that work for me that hail from a number of vulnerable populations to include this one. So I take the executive directors or any member on my team's input on this issue and others very civilly, and they interact with me directly on hundreds of occasions during the week. So I think people in my, the, the staff that work in the Department of Corrections, by their access to me, have influence because I'm the commissioner.
I would, I, I understand. I would say based on what I've seen in that story, and I, I remember when I went to, right, because there was a non-binary, I think they identified as trans if I remember correctly, in a facility. And as I mentioned, I'm not from the community, but I do identify pain. That person was in a lot of pain, very terrified. And so from what I've seen and what I saw in the city and what I've heard, it seems that that unit and the people who are advocating for the population does have less influence, maybe a perspective, but it seems like it's true. And I just want to say that if we, if we, because of, we need to intentionally identify areas of microaggressions, of aggressions, and if we don't intentionally try to do that, people get harmed. And I always try to use myself in my journey and growth to continue to do that, and I hope you and the, and Department of Corrections does as well, because people are going to, are being harmed and will continue to be harmed. Last, I did want to mention, I'm very concerned about the camera situation. It seems to me, I heard what you mentioned, I, I can't see if it was true or not. If it is true, if people working home when they could have come in, that is a valid point. But I don't know if this decision was in direct response to that. I would like to know what sparked the change, because it does seem that it was more restrictive and unnecessarily so. So is there something that happened that made you have to restrict the access that the Board of Corrections had?
I think I wanted to ensure that the management of our jail was in compliance with the city charter. Like we have to be in compliance with a number of different areas in the management of a correctional facility. And I made that decision to be in compliance with the city charter, which still allows the Board of Corrections all the access rights that are outlined in the city charter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say we have known each other for a while. I know the work that you want to do. I have to say, even with that response, it seems to me that there was no specific reason to do that. Other than that, we wanted to take away access that the Board of Corrections had, perhaps because they were shining light on a lot of things that the department didn't want to see. And I'm hoping that that was not the case, but I'm not hearing a real reason to have made that change right now. So hopefully if there is one, you can share that at some point. But thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. We're going to hear from Councilmember Stevens, followed by Brewer.
Good morning, everyone, and hello, Commissioner.
Morning.
So I just have two really quick questions. So can you talk to me a little bit about what kind of training does DOC and VOC staff receive to provide gender, gender-affirming care to folks who are incarcerated? And please give details around frequency and topics that are covered.
Sure. So I can't speak to the Board of Corrections' training and how they train their staff, so I'll let them speak for themselves. We have respectful LGBTQI-plus classification training. It is an instructor-led training. It is trained. The audience of that training is recruit correction officers during the academy. We have patrice and search of special population training. That was previously called cross-gender and transgender patrice search training. That is also taught at our academy. The audience for that is also uniform recruit correction officers. It is also offered in in-service training regularly. We have pride ambassador training.
Can you, what, what is regularly? What does that mean?
And some, and some of our trainings were required to do it yearly, and others were doing it every two years. So I can follow up which one of these are yearly's, which one of these are, are two years. Happy to do that for you. We have pride ambassador training. That, the audience for that was pride ambassadors selected by the Division of Programs and Community Partnerships for uniform officers. We have gender-responsive trauma-informed and gender-responsive approaches to DOC operations. The target audience of that training is uniform staff. We do that training not only in recruit training, which is the initial academy training, but we also offer it in-service to correction officers as well, particularly those that are assigned to Rosie's on an in-service basis. We have a visit process training. Audience for that is also our uniform staff. It's an in-service training for correction officers that work in our visit housing area. We have power of inclusion training. That happens to be a training that must be completed every two years. This training will facilitate awareness of the emotional impact of being a member of the LGBTQ community and provides guidance for how to create and promote an open and inclusive environment for this community. We have everybody matters, equal employment opportunity, and diversity of inclusion for New York City employees training that's driven by DCAST. That's also done every two years. That training course supports the mandated under Local Law 121 in the city charter and provides all city employees with the framework to understand the importance of diversity and inclusion and how to develop the skills needed to create an inclusive workplace. We also have Prison Rape Elimination Act initial training, and we have Prison Rape Elimination Act refresher training. Both of those things are related to our PR standards. On September 4th of 2003, President George W. Bush signed into law the Prison Rape Elimination Act of 2003. And the goal, goal of the Prison Rape Elimination Act is to eradicate prison rape in all types of correctional facilities in the United States. And it's, that training is part of our Prison Rape Elimination Act standards.
So you guys are having regular trainings, and there's a number of trainings. And, and just, and just thinking about your, the evaluations of these trainings, how, how do you think these things are being implemented and like evaluating the staff around this training that they're receiving? Because often there's, there's training that's provided, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's implemented.
So I think you make a good point, Councilmember. I think, and your point is that training is not learning. And I think what we've done in recently appointing Dr. Robert Gonzalez, who's our Deputy Commissioner of Training, who has over two decades of experience in this field, is that in addition to enhancing and improving training where needed from a lesson plan standpoint, what he's going to also be doing is doing surveys to get feedback on how that training is impacting the student's learning ability. He's done a lot of work in a very, very short time. We're talking a mere couple of months that he's been with us. But I think that's an important point, that we want to adopt the practices that are adopted by higher education to make sure that the goals of learning are achieved.
Yeah, I think it's always really important because, you know, it's always nice and easy to come in and list the trainings that people take, but the implementation and evaluation is always super important. That should be part of the process. And not just from the people who took the training, but also the people who are affected by it, right? So I'm a big proponent of 360 trainings where, I mean, 360 evaluations where not only they're being evaluated, but also the folks who are being affected are also being evaluated, which I think is, is super important. So definitely we'll want to follow up around what that looks like and how can we make sure that is being implemented. And then I just have one more question around, if someone identifies as transgender, how would they be able to disclose this information and what would the immediate steps be? Please explain how staff, who, who on the staff they would disclose this to and timelines around getting supports that they need.
Got it. So just, I'll answer your question. I just want to go back to just one more point about evaluation. So we recently appointed an Assistant Commissioner in Program Evaluation. This individual is part of our Office of Management, Analysis, and Planning that I've shared with you in the past, that what we've done is we want to be an evidence-based, data-informed, learning organization. And evaluating not only our programmatic initiatives to include our initiatives with this specific community is something that, that Assistant Commissioner is going to spear up. So happy to share more with you that offline. To your question of how someone can express their gender identity and get consideration for, for housing. So we have a number of ways that we do that. Through our intake process. In our intake process, we have not only a Prison Rape Elimination Act questionnaire, but we also have a classification questionnaire that's, that persons that are placed in our custody also fill out, which allow them an opportunity to express their gender identity. And if they want to go into preferred housing of their choice, at that time, they can submit a Special Consideration Unit application. And the determination unit, within a three days, makes a determination whether or not that application is going to be approved. In 2022, we had a 75% approval rate of applicants that have come in for that consideration. And then we're placing those individuals in what that determination unit deems to be the appropriate housing. Persons that are part of that determination unit get guidance from CHS. They get guidance from the LBGTQ-plus Affairs Unit. They also get guidance from our PR, Prison Rape Elimination Act team, as well as facility leadership has an opportunity just to share with the group observations that they've had with the individual, if we've had a history of, of just that person being just as involved in, in our system. So a lot goes into making that determination. In the event that the determination does not go in the applicant's favor, for lack of a better term, I'll say the applicant's favor, then that individual is afforded a reconsideration process to provide additional information that may not have been provided in the original application, which could include recommendations from outside.
What would be a determinant factor for them not to be considered?
So there, there's a number of that. It's not an exact science, but I think, you know, you have individuals, small number, that may gender identify for the purpose of preferred housing rather than their gender identity. And we have information, sometimes that's phone calls, sometimes that's how they define their gender identity that gives us that determination. There are security concerns that we take into consideration, classification concerns, separation order concern. So there's just a number of different areas in totality that inform that decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Shulman remotely. And now Councilmember Brewer for questions.
Yep, thank you very much. I've always been confused as to why health and hospitals, and I have great respect for Dr. Katz, doesn't front-load Rikers with the best medical care in the world? Because people may not get that outside, but here would be your opportunity to do this at Rikers. I've told Dr. Katz that. I'll keep saying it. So my question in this case is, and I know you talked about a team approach, which is always excellent, so I don't know how many people are actually on that team. And I also understand that the main provider is at Rosie's, although many people from the TGNC and BI community are in the men's jails. So I wanted to know if there are medical providers trained in trans care and hormone replacement therapy in the men's jails. And then I also want to know with health and hospitals, I guess it's called correctional health services, but I call it health and hospitals, train more medical providers on trans-related healthcare to ensure that there's universal access. I guess in general also, we'd love to have more specifics. How many people get healthcare? Are there any challenges? Are the correction officers bringing people over? Do they want to go over? Do they have a doctor whom they respect? So those are two questions, but please, the medical has got to be better at Rikers. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So I guess to start, I would say we do have really excellent healthcare providers. Our nurses, doctors, social workers, PAs on Rikers do a really difficult job exceptionally well.
More of them. Go ahead.
Yes, we are recruiting and hiring additional professionals. So to your first question, I believe it was about the capacity to initiate or maintain hormone therapy. So we have worked to build that capacity throughout our primary care service. So it wouldn't just be a provider on Rosie's who could initiate or maintain that therapy for a patient. Although most of our expertise in this field would be our Rosie's providers. But, you know, every individual patient receives individualized medical and mental health treatment potentially through this interdisciplinary team. Although it is small, it's new. But that's where our transgender patients who have particularly unique clinical needs.
So do you have data? It doesn't have to be now, but exactly how many people have been served for the last year? Because that's how long this administration has been in existence, exactly what kind of services they have received. Are you planning more to play, are you going to have more medical providers on, on healthcare to ensure that there's universal access specifically on trans-related? Do you have that data today, or can you provide it? Specifics, how many people have you served? What kind of services have they received? And then do you also have some kind of a survey? Are they happy? Are they not happy? Every time I fill out something for my healthcare, I get this goddamn survey asking me, do you like it? Do you not like it? Do you do something similar?
So that would happen in real time. We don't have, you know, an official survey that goes out to patients after their clinical encounters.
Would you consider doing that?
I think it's something we can talk about for sure with our clinicians, how that could help, you know, improve treatment. I can tell you, since the interdisciplinary team was established in August of last year, there have been 36 transgender patients who have received that specialized care. The team also cares for vulnerable patients generally, so they're also treating our medically complex patients, pregnant patients, geriatric patients.
If people go from Rosie's to the men's jail, is there, because of some kind of difference in terms of what they're requesting? Is that something, is that a policy that is appropriate for health? And do you monitor such policies? If people wanted different hormone treatment, do you monitor policies like that? Or is that just something that's done by correction?
In terms of the change in housing placement?
Yes, yep, yep.
So we do have to be careful about how we insert a clinical voice into gender-based housing placements because, you know, a clinician can't determine an individual's gender identity. There's no medical or mental health evaluation. But we also understand that an individual who feels unsafe or unhappy in his or their housing placement that could adversely affect their mental health. So there is a voice for us there. We just don't want to medicalize gender identity.
So either you or the Commissioner mentioned that you consult with some of these national organizations. Is that something that you do regarding healthcare also?
So a lot of community-based and international healthcare standards informed our transgender care policies and associated care templates. We do have expertise within the system, but we also speak to other jurisdictions.
So my question would be getting the data specifically. I mentioned, I think, 36 people, but if anything more specific would be helpful. And then second, I'd like to see a survey. Can you promise that you'll get us a survey?
I will definitely speak with our clinicians about that.
Dr. Katz, we'll get a phone call from me. We want a survey. Thank you very much.
I know.
Thank you, Councilmember, for asking for data. And, and that's just the, the part that I mentioned earlier, Commissioner. When we had asked, following the October 25th Committee on Criminal Justice Hearing focused on, on substance use in, in city jails, we asked for a per-month breakdown of drug seizures that occurred at the following interdiction points, the mail from visitors from DOE staff and from DOC contract providers. And you gave us part of the data and referred us to DOI. And we know that there is data because DOI actually shared with reporters complaints regarding contraband smuggling by DOC staff, and that it had soared by about 70% in 2022 compared to 2021. So I just want to say that there is a difference between responding to data requests and actually providing all the relevant data, information we've requested of your agency. So I just want to clear that up, and you saying you get us all the stuff that we asked for.
Well, I, I don't have access to DOI's data. I think you may be referencing allegations of which have a very low substantiation rate based on, if you're referring to the article that came out regarding allegations of contraband narcotics coming in, but that is data that I don't control. It's housed within DOI, so they have to be responsive to you on those areas, in the areas of what we had to do mail.
I know the data exists, Commissioner, because you came in and claimed how many instances of drugs in the hundreds that, that you have acquired, and yet we never really got a breakdown. You brought in pictures of fentanyl-laced Christmas cards, and you never gave us a breakdown of how you gathered that data. So here's what I'm going to say.
We can resend it to you.
Here's what I'm going to say. You gave us part of the data. You referred us to DOI. I am not saying you're DOI. I know that you have data that you can share and that you should, and that you claim to have in completion. What I'm saying is that the referral is not the same as actually sharing data. So we could agree to disagree. But in terms of transparency, I would love our relationship to get better and improve, but I want to get back to the hearing topic to not take away from, from this issue. So the directives that you've requested related to TGNC and BI individuals include more than reconsideration of housing decisions. They also cover treatment by staff. So what security concerns are there specifically with making the policy public? Can you give us an example?
No, not at this time.
You don't have an example of
I don't.
why it could be problematic? Okay. When do you think you could get back to us on that?
I can give you a timeline by the end of today when I can get back to you. I can give you a timeline by the end of today when I can get back to you.
All right. I'll hear from you later today. So in DOC's response to the TGNC NBI task force report, the department states that the department disagrees with the recommendation that no one shall be removed from gender-aligned housing, such as the SCU, as a form of punishment. Are individuals removed from SCU to de-escalate violence, placed into temporary restrictive housing, such as solitary confinement, or rather place in gender-misaligned general population housing units? So if the punishment is general population, why is this done? How do you go about making those decisions?
So if we have an incident in a special consideration unit, and it is possible that we could have an incident there where the primary aggressor needs to be removed, we do have de-escalation housing, as you know, which is temporary, typically less than six hours, so we can make a determination if that individual should go back to their original housing location, or is there some other appropriate housing for that individual? But I agree that in general principle, a person who gender identifies and is in a preferred gender-identified housing unit, if they committed, if they had general conflicts that would happen in cisgender units, that they just wouldn't be summarily removed, it 's on a case-by-case basis, right? So it really depends on the type of incident that we may be evaluating at that moment. And we don't have solitary confinement, so we're not placing anybody in solitary confinement.
Well, that was the subject of a seven-hour hearing, and I hope we can pass that bill, because I do believe that a version of it does exist, and that it is up to us to ensure that it does not exist in any form. I'm going to let Chair Caban ask a couple of questions.
Thank you. I mean, I just want to start by saying that it is deeply disturbing knowing, coming in knowing what the topic of today's hearing would be, and you're unable to provide and articulate one reason supporting a really consequential policy that your department has taken. That is, I'm a little bit blown away by that, and I'm usually not so surprised by some of the answers. But I want to talk about housing, and I want to get very specific here. Is a transgender person's disciplinary record taken into consideration in their housing determination of whether to house them in a men's or women's facility?
All persons' disciplinary record, if one exists, helps inform a classification housing decision.
And is a cisgender person, so that includes a cisgender person then, right? Their disciplinary record is taken into consideration to determine whether to house them in a men's or women's facility? Or I guess, let me reframe the question. So you're saying a transgender person's disciplinary record is taken into consideration on whether to house them in a men's or women's facility, is what I just heard, correct?
All persons to include.
So then specifically, is a cisgender person's disciplinary record taken into consideration in their housing determination of whether to house them in a men's or women's facility?
A cisgender's person's disciplinary record would help inform the appropriate housing unit that that person would be placed in.
Again, specifically, their disciplinary record?
It is part of what informs the decision, in some cases.
So you're telling me, so you're telling me that the New York City Department of Corrections would send a cisgender woman to a men's jail based on her disciplinary record?
Not solely on that alone.
But could have, you're saying it could happen?
In the totality of evaluating security classification needs, the vulnerabilities of other persons that are placed in our custodial care, it helps, it informs the decision for all persons that are in our custody.
Have you, in taking into account a cisgender woman's disciplinary record, have you ever then made the decision to house her in a men's jail?
No.
Okay. Is a transgender person's criminal record taken into consideration in their housing determination of whether to house them in a men's or women's facility?
It's possible, related to Prison Rape Elimination Act standards, again, there's a multitude of factors that go into making this decision, of which 75% have been approved, in making sure that someone's in the appropriate level of housing.
So when you say it's possible, then the answer to my question is yes. A transgender person's criminal record is taken into consideration in determining whether to house them in a men's or women's facility, correct?
It helps inform this decision. All of those things are security classification, information pieces that go into taking that decision, yes.
Simply yes, okay, thank you. Is a cisgender person's criminal record taken into consideration in their housing determination of whether to house them in a men's or women's facility?
Their criminal charges help inform the security classification of that individual and determine what is the best housing for them.
So again, you're telling me that the New York City Department of Corrections would send a cisgender woman to a men's jail based on her criminal record?
No, because we have sight and separation rules by the State Commission on Corrections that we have to abide by.
Okay. So I just want to contextualize what I just heard. Commissioner, your answers to these questions illustrates that discrimination persists. The DOC must ensure that there are no additional factors in determining safe gender-aligned housing for TGNC NBI people in custody that would not be considered in the housing of cisgender people in custody. So, I mean, to put it very simply, to say that you would do something different in the case of a cisgender woman, but that these are considerations you would make for a trans woman, or a gender non-conforming, or a non-binary, or intersex person, is a difference in how those populations are being treated? Just, I just want to close that section with that. Now, you had said that a cisgender woman has never been housed in the men's jail, correct?
Not since I've been there, no.
So housing for cisgender women is not on a case-by-case basis in terms of gender alignment?
No, because we have sight and separation rules with the State Commission on Corrections when it comes to cisgender men and women.
And I just want to be really clear on this again. A cisgender woman would, like, well, I guess you said they would be considered for housing in a men's jail. That was your previous testimony, is that correct?
No, what I said was if we had a trans man that wanted to be housed in a male facility, the determination unit would take it under advisement.
So a cisgender woman would never be considered for housing in a men's jail, correct?
Not based on the State Commission on Correction rules.
Now, housing reconsideration can only happen after 90 days, so trans women need to be stuck in a men's jail for 90 days before potentially going back to Rosie's, correct?
They would be staying in the appropriate housing that we would determine is best for them.
Those 90 days?
Yes.
They could be stuck in a men's jail before going back to Rosie's?
It could be.
Okay. I want to go back for one more thing, and then I will wrap up. I think this is really important to note. You had talked about Priya. Councilmember Gutierrez, when she was here, hit on this a lot. I just, just for context, this double-sided is the report from the task force. It's 140 pages. I don't have your response right in front of me, but this was the length of your responses, like the equivalent of this. And so, you know, I take it to heart when the council member talks about how seriously the task force's efforts are being taken by your department. And some of the things that I'm deeply concerned about is, you know, I've heard some of the answers around, well, we have queer or gender expansive staff. It's not comparable to having a fully-staffed task force dedicated to the issues faced by trans, GNC, non-binary, and intersex New Yorkers. And, you know, if we want to be evidence-based and data-informed, then this report is the evidence and the data. And it includes, it includes sections titled "Training Within the DOC is Ineffective," and "It Does Not Reflect Collective Leadership With the Recommendations." And so if you endeavor to be data-informed, then I am certainly urging you to engage with the data and the task force that made it. And, you know, I've heard what the policies are supposed to be, but I will say, and I think that we're going to hear it, and I hope that you stay to listen to it, that this has been very contrary to my personal experiences. I have been to your facilities under your watch. I have met with transgender, non-binary, gender non-conforming folks who have sat in intake for three or four days. I have seen people with their housing changed because of disciplinary action taken. A lot of the things that you have named are policies. I have talked to people who have experienced it firsthand. As a public defender representing gender expansive New Yorkers, I have sat on the other side of a cage, watching a transgender woman sit before me with a sea of men behind her at 100 Center Street, growing facial hair for the first time in years because she wasn't getting her hormones, didn't want to be housed in gen pop with men, and you could see the fear in her eyes. This is, this is life and death. And if there are folks here who have not read the personal accounts that are included in this task force report, I urge you to, I urge you to, because it does, we know this. Leileen Polanco is an example. It has killed people. And so we need you to do better, and we need you to meaningfully engage with the work that the task force is doing. And these other things that you have mentioned are not a substitute for that. And so I, I promise I'm going to wrap it up.
We're going to hear from the task force panel now.
Yeah, I just want to note that in this really comprehensive report, when you talked about Priya, Commissioner, that there were, there were some significant problems with your ability to implement it, saying, quote, "Many of the complaints collected from task force members, including various city agency service providers and Board of Corrections, appear to stem from the DOC's misinterpretation and misapplication of these standards when applied to the TGNC NBI people in custody." And so that's incredibly important. I hope that that gets fleshed out with the task force testimony. And again, I hope that you stay to listen to it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here and for answering our questions. I know there was some data requested from you all, and some commitments, and hopefully promises fulfilled, including on hormone replacement therapy from CHS, a potential survey asked by Councilmember Brewer, training medical providers, just universal access in general, and then the ongoing challenges with medical care. And Commissioner Merlin, I mentioned some of the other data that we've requested that we hope to hear from you in relation to the topic of this hearing and previous ones. So again, we hope that you will stay. There are people that have been waiting here very patiently, and I just want to thank you. We are going to hear from the task force first, and I'm going to announce that panel in a second. So thank you for your testimony. Task Force Panel One, and if I mispronounce your name, please correct me. It happens to me, I don't want it to happen to you, and I welcome the correction. We have Deborah Lollai, Sheer Avery, Grace Travarra, Mick Kinkead, and we have Rachel Golden on Zoom.
One of the, one of the task force lawyers used to be an intern in my office when I worked at a PD, as a PDA. It's hilarious, you know? Oops, sorry.
You can start as soon as you're ready. Just make sure the red button is on, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. I just want to start off by thanking you all. I, on my way here in the cab, I find, I found myself not able to control my tears, and I didn't know what was happening. And the same thing happened this morning when you all introduced this hearing. And I realize that for so many years, close to 10 years, I have been working with trans and gender expansive folks and representing them and hearing their stories, and so many of their faces have been coming up for me in the last two weeks as I've collected stories to share with you today. And each of them has experienced so much pain, and that pain I carry with me in all of my work, in everything I do every single day. And I cannot tell you how much gratitude I have for you to allow us to share those stories and those experiences and bring people's voices out. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Good morning, Chair Rivera, Chair Caban, and committee members. My name is Deborah Lollai. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a member of the New York City Task Force on Incarcerated, Transgender, Gender Nonconforming, Non-binary, and Intersex Individuals, and one of the authors of the task force's report. I'm also the Director of the LGBTQ Defense Project at the Bronx Defenders. A large portion of the work, the LGBTQ Defense Project, a large portion of our work at the LGBTQ Defense Project involves representing gender expansive people in criminal cases and advocating for improved conditions of confinement for them during their incarceration in New York City jails. Those of us testifying today as members of the task force will be testifying about the report, our needs in writing future reports, and the proposed legislation. I will focus on the report that describes the inadequacies of DOC's current intake process and how it causes significant harm to gender expansive people. But before I do that, and I will certainly address many, many points that the department mentioned this morning in my written testimony. However, what I want to know is where was the Executive Director of the LGBTQI Initiatives Unit this morning? With all due respect, there were several comments that the Commissioner made which demonstrated how little he understands about this issue, and how little he understands the needs of this community. He couldn't respond to the most basic questions. The only person I have ever interacted with at the Department of Corrections who does understand these issues, and who is actually invested in helping incarcerated gender expansive folks, is Elizabeth Munskey, the Executive Director of that unit. And I want to know where she is. Why didn't, the department did not, why didn't they have her testify today? She would have been able to answer all of your questions, I'm sure. As you know, the determination of whether a person is going to be incarcerated pre-trial is made by the judge at their arraignment, the first court appearance, usually hours or days after the arrest. There are so many important aspects of the arraignment that can determine the trajectory of a person's case, such as whether bail is set. One aspect of arraignments that is not as well-known to most people is that the paperwork filled out during the arraignment, specifically the securing order, also known as the blue card, will determine whether a person will be sent to the women's jail or men's jail for intake. A court officer fills out the blue card, and DOC sends every person to the male or female intake facility based solely on the gender designation marked on the blue card. We, public defenders and advocates, routinely advocate for the gender designation on blue cards to be marked correctly for our gender expansive clients. My colleagues call me every time they are representing a transgender person in arraignment, and I can tell you that unfortunately, our advocacy is not always enough. Many judges refuse to correct the gender designation on the blue card, and when they do, direct court officers to mark the blue cards with the correct gender. Court officers often ignore the judge's instruction. While this seems like an unimportant technical step, an incorrect notation on the blue card often results in gender expansive people experiencing extreme violence. You are going to hear many testimonies today by individuals on behalf of currently incarcerated gender expansive people. Many of the horrifying experiences you will hear about could have been prevented if DOC's intake process met the safety needs of gender expansive people. One of those clients, Ms. Regina, is a transgender woman who has been incarcerated at least three times in the past few years. During one of her incarcerations a few years ago, she was housed in the men's jail. She begged DOC to send her to Rosie's, the women's jail, but they refused. Only after she was attacked with boiling water and suffered from third-degree burns was she moved to Rosie's. Since that incident, she has been released and incarcerated twice more. Her blue card was marked with male, which meant that despite DOC having a record of her being physically assaulted in custody for being a transgender woman and previously transferred to Rosie's, she was sent to the men's intake facility. the men's intake facility. During the 10-day quarantine period at the men's jail, she was physically assaulted. Weeks later, she was arrested again, and the same thing happened once more. But this time, she spent nearly a month in the men's jail before she was transferred to Rosie's. Ms. Regina's case is an example of violence against a transgender woman in DOC custody that could have been entirely prevented if DOC did not rely on the blue card's gender designation, but instead had a more meaningful and inclusive intake process. Each day that a gender expansive person is sent to a misaligned, sent to a jail misaligned with their gender identity, their life and safety is at risk. To DOC, a 10-day period may not seem like a long time. Evidently, by DOC, by Commissioner Molina's statement that 90 days seems to, you know, be not a big deal to wait to submit a reconsideration form. However, to a transgender person experiencing violence during that time, the trauma remains with them forever. We can prevent this from happening. If the Office of Court Administration is not willing to take action to address this issue, we urge the City Council to address it. DOC should not solely rely on a gender marker on a piece of paper to determine where a transgender person will be held. There should be a meaningful intake process before people are brought to intake. The task force has offered suggested amendments to improve Intro Number 728 to include this, and we hope that you will consider our proposal. I'd also like to briefly comment on Resolution Number 117. While state legislation amending securing orders to include a non-binary gender marker X is certainly well-intentioned and clearly an effort to be inclusive of people who identified outside of the male or female binary, it will not be helpful in ensuring that gender expansive people are sent to the correct intake facility. First, there are currently no jails for non-binary people, and we are not advocating for more jails to be built. Second, there is, there isn't currently an opportunity at arraignment for people to correct their gender marker on paperwork unless their lawyer knows to ask about it, and we can convince court staff to change the gender marker on their paperwork. And just another example of how clearly Commissioner Molina does not understand these issues, he seemed to suggest that including gender marker X would be helpful because trans women could be marked as gender marker X. That's not helpful because transgender women are women. Including a gender marker X would be to be inclusive of non-binary people, not women. My colleague, Mick Kinkead, will be addressing the remaining legislation on behalf of the task force. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you on this matter, and I hope to continue this conversation with both committees and other members of City Council. And of course, I can answer any follow-up questions.
If it's acceptable, is it possible for Dr. Golden to go next, please? Because she is, she's zooming in from India. That's how important this is to her.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mick, and everyone. Good morning, Chair Rivera, Chair Caban, and other committee members. I'm so grateful to be able to speak with you all today, and I'm sorry I'm unable to be there in person. My name is Dr. Rachel N. Golden. My pronouns are she and they. I am a psychologist with a decade of training and experience in gender-affirming care, and I'm the founder and director of Golden Psychology, a gender-affirming practice based in New York City. Across my career, I have provided support for hundreds of gender expansive individuals and their families. I also developed the New York State Transgender Identity Program, part, as a function of OMH, which provides gender-affirming care to people held within 29 of the 53 New York State prisons. I currently consult on legal cases related to gender care and affirmation for people held in city jails, federal detention centers, and state prisons, and I volunteered to be on this task force. I will speak today about two important steps towards supporting TGNCNBI people within the correctional system. One, quickly and efficiently housing individuals in facilities that align with their gender. And two, ensuring that CHS and the Department of Correction provide prompt access to the gender-affirming medical care, including surgeries and gender-affirming hormones that TGNCNBI people within the correctional system deserve. First, why is quick and efficient housing in gender-affirming settings so important? TGNCNBI individuals face disproportionate rates of incarceration and violence, and victimization while incarcerated. In published research, 78% of transgender individuals reported emotional pain from hiding their gender identity during incarceration. 47% of transgender women who had been incarcerated reported being victimized while incarcerated, and 59% of transgender women reported being sexually assaulted while incarcerated. This is compared to 4% of men held in male facilities. The burden of this victimization is disproportionately carried by transgender women of color, and the result of these experiences is trauma, PTSD, depression, anxiety, and suicide attempts and completions. These are well-documented facts about the experiences of TGNCNBI individuals in carceral settings, and there is no reason to expect that New York City sites are any different. TGNCNBI individuals in custody deserve to be quickly placed in housing that aligns with their gender identity and allows them a safer place from which to embody their identity. Any delays in placement and fear-mongering that one bad actor will pretend to be transgender, therefore create an unsafe environment, results in the continued disproportionate targeting of TGNCNBI individuals for harassment and violence. This is especially dangerous for those who are already multiply marginalized, especially those early in their gender exploration and transition. Failing to quickly place individuals in gender-affirming housing increases the risks and instances of sexual violence, mental health decompensation, and places an added burden on the correctional system to manage complaints and treat medical and mental health issues that result from individuals being housed in a non-affirming setting. It seems in the best interest of all to speedily place individuals in housing that aligns with their gender and safety needs. To continue, the wrongful idea that there is great incentive to pretend to be trans in order to gain access to transgender housing units and services, or for other antisocial gain, is a fallacy. Given the reality of harassment, trauma, and abuse, there is little to no incentive to pretend to be transgender, let alone to put in the work to sustain that ruse over time. In addition, there is absolutely no evidence that people pretending to be transgender is a common occurrence, whereas there is ample evidence supporting the risk of violence and assault to transgender women being housed in a male facility. Next, I will speak about the importance of access to gender-affirming medical care, which broadly covers access to gender-affirming hormones, commonly referred to as HRT, and gender-affirming surgeries. Medical transition via HRT or surgery is a well-documented, effective treatment for gender dysphoria. It is endorsed by the World Health Organization among countless other medical and mental health organizations, such as the American Medical Association, which states that gender-affirming care is medically necessary, evidence-based care that improves the physical and mental health of transgender and gender diverse people. In essence, withholding this care is akin to withholding insulin from a person with diabetes. Transition itself is often a winding path with switchbacks and has no set endpoint or goal. For those who wish to medically affirm their transition, this procedures, the procedures cost time, money, and immense mental energy, including a constant risk of violence and mistreatment every step of the way. Given the challenges in accessing medical services, many people are not able to engage in medical gender affirmation prior to incarceration. In addition, the process of transition varies across individuals, and some may not choose to pursue medical gender affirmation, as it may not affirm their experience of their gender identity. TGNCNBI individuals who do not wish to medically affirm their transition, or who are early in their transition, may not fit a binary notion of what, quote, "being trans" looks or sounds like. However, this is not proof of present danger to others, deceit, or potential to cause harm. In fact, lack of medical transition can place people at a greater risk of harassment and abuse. TGNCNBI individuals held in custody should be given access to gender-affirming medical care as meets their individual transition needs. They deserve to be afforded gender-affirming housing that provides greater safety while they are held in custody. Both are lifesaving solutions that have the potential for a tremendous impact on well-being and safety and reduction of violence and trauma. We have a duty to believe people when they tell us they are trans. It takes great courage for people to self-advocate in this setting in particular, to receive medical care, to ask to be moved into affirming housing units so they can more safely transition, find community, and become themselves. When legislation and correctional environments prevent this, undue harm is unequivocally the result. We have a responsibility to TGNCNBI people within the correctional system to do the work of affirmation and protection, starting with allowing TGNCNBI individuals held in custody to be quickly housed and without delay in facilities concurrent with their gender experience and providing access to lifesaving medical interventions, such as surgeries and access to HRT. Thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hello. I'm Grace DeChivera. My pronouns are she, miss, her. I am a formerly incarcerated trans woman. I spent almost 15 years of my life watching this whole department change from the 90s to now. I am evidence of what can be, but that's not important. As a service provider today with the Osborne Association and dealing with the issues from arrest to arraignment to detainment has been disrespected, has been informed by those all who are adequate to change, to listen, to modify, and not come in front of this council, in front of these people, and become unprepared and just use procedural tactics. Because that is exactly what we all heard here today. We would hope for those of us who do what we do, that we don't continue to chase our own tails with procedures that we are not even considered for. We have to die in custody. We have to not even know what those procedures are once we do become in custody. As a person who provides services for those who are not only incarcerated right now, but who provide services directly impacted by Rikers Island, and being a black or Latino or a trans or woman, please understand that oversight from arrest till the procedures that are in front of us are allocated for you to look over and include us, because you cannot do this with just policies. These are human beings you are talking about here. So I say and speak for those formerly incarcerated who have restructured their life to be able to come here and tell you, as a formerly incarcerated person who is now part of the transition of getting us adequate, humane services and care while in custody or going through the system. We thank you as a collective. We thank you as human beings, and we damn sure ask you as voters, as your citizens, take this just as important as you would take any issue, and don't do this seasonally. Do you hear me? This ain't June. We go through this from January to December. This task force continues to be the proactive ones. We watched here today, and I will say it again, as my colleagues sat here and witnessed. We do not need, just like you don't need to be proactive, listening to a directive or a policy direction that he couldn't even tell you what is the access for or where they're going with it, because they had never read it. Again, I thank you.
Hello. Good morning. I would like to note for the record that the only council members remaining are Chair Rivera and Chair Caban. And even after being asked to remain present for public testimony, to hear from the members of this task force, DOC decided to leave. I'm Sheer Avery. I use they/them pronouns. I'm the lead statewide community organizer at New Pride Agenda and a sitting member of the New York City Task Force on Issues Impacting TGNCNBI People in Custody. I am a Black and Indigenous, non-binary, trans femme of Seminole and Blackfoot descent, a creative visionary, published researcher, social justice advocate, and practical abolitionist. I've been a leading voice of youth activism within movements for social justice since the age of 13, and have become one of the most politically influential leaders of my generation. It's an honor to be here today. Given my lived experience, I am grateful to be alive and to have the courage to participate in this moment and in our work as a City Commission Task Force to honor Leileen. However long overdue, the day has come. The light of day has finally been cast on our effort, on our labor, on our expertise. This is our moment. This is our public hearing. Today, not only will we be seen, we will be heard. I'd like to begin my remarks with a few moments of collective silence. May we all take a moment of silence for Leileen Polanco Extravaganza. May we take a moment of silence for Elisa Rodriguez, another sibling of our community who died after experiencing the horrors of being wrongfully housed as a male on Rikers Island, raped, evaluated, and then sent back to the same housing unit at AMKC where she was raped again. May we take a moment of silence for the 19 people who died on Rikers Island in 2022 and for the 15 lives lost on Rikers Island the year prior, for Khalif Browder, and all the lives lost to senseless acts of violence, hate, and the atrocities of state-based systemic and institutional oppressions. And lastly, a moment of silence to honor the land for which we are on, the sovereign land of the Lenape, to honor their lives and the lives of our ancestors. They will not be forgotten in however brief a moment, the very least we can offer, to reflect on the lasting devastation of colonialism and to reckon with my ancestors eternal grief that will only cease with the demise of all that oppresses us. Thank you. My heart breaks today. My heart breaks for Leileen and for all of my siblings who can't be here today to share their own stories in their own voices. I am bracing for more heartbreak in hearing the testimonies and lived experiences of our community family who are fortunate enough to still be alive, to speak for themselves at today's hearing, and in the struggle of daily life as a rallying cry for the innumerable stories that we won't ever know. I'm heartbroken anticipating that what I say today will not be heard, reflected upon, and acted on. I'm heartbroken because that is what has been the reality of the City Commission Task Force since early after its establishment. Our words, our experiences, our recommendations over the past three years, especially throughout the pandemic, has meant nothing to so many, very little to some, but more than words today, where nearly 200 pages can express to us. It has been a genuine, exhaustingly traumatic labor of love, dedication to justice, and commitment to freedom. The most important question you all must ask yourself today is if you have the same moral reverence, character of service, and unwavering diligence to the enrichment of the communities you serve as we do. There's an old, yet most fitting saying in grassroots organizing that goes, "Whose side are you on, friend? Whose side are you on? Whose side are you on, friend? Whose side are you on?" I was here in the galley of council chambers on October seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, just three short months after the unfortunate and preventable death of Leilean Polanco, when the council voted in support of new borough-based jails and a non-binding commitment to close Rikers Island by 2027. Now, four years before its scheduled closing. The greatest fears of activists and organizers on the other side of the Close Rikers Now campaign are playing out in real time. Not only is the Adams administration hell-bent on continuing the torturous use of solitary confinement rebranded as punitive segregation, the mayor has publicly stated his damning opposition to closing Rikers entirely. Worse, he has the gall to support its expansion with a so-called Plan B. I stand by what I said speaking at the No New Jails rally in City Hall Park directly after the Close Rikers Now vote. Quote, "Every council member who voted in support of closing Rikers to build new jails is a modern-day slaveholder," end quote. They had blood on their hands. Mayor Adams has blood on his hands, and with 2022 being the deadliest year of jailing in New York City, this council has blood on its hands too. I stand by what I said then, and I stand by what I am saying now: Save our lives. We are dying. Before I proceed, I acknowledge some may not appreciate the tone I'm taking, some may not agree with what I say, your values and principles might not align with mine. That's okay. After my remarks, it's possible a few of you will even dismiss me as an arrogant, loud-mouthed, disrespectful, radical young person. That's okay too. Unfortunately, I'm used to it. But please allow me to be a touch more personal. I am a survivor of conversion therapy, the turbulence of foster care, the reality of homelessness, and the pipelines to, the pipelines of poverty to incarceration. I am a grassroots activist and organizer committed to the advancement of social, economic, racial, gender, disability, and environmental justice. I have the honor of serving then-former Vice President Biden as the 2018 Biden Fellow for LGBTQ Equality at the Biden Foundation in Washington, DC. During the height of the pandemic, I worked to make public policy, government funding, and city services more equitable for New Yorkers as a policy associate at the Office of the New York City Public Advocate. And my record speaks for itself with eight legislative victories and winning over thirteen million dollars in investments into resources and services for our intersectional communities across the country. You don't have to like me personally or agree with what I say, but you will respect my time and my expertise, and you will listen to the call to action I came prepared to deliver today. Our grieving community will be heard today, and I hope my words, our words, reverberate into immediate and urgent action to save our lives now. Just yesterday, the city published an article following a five-month investigation about the Adams administration and Commissioner Molina specifically, working to completely disband the LGBTQ+ Affairs Unit and remove protections for trans women. How timely and ironic that after four long years, the day before our first public hearing, three years overdue, whistleblowers are the headline of a news story suddenly exposing the same growing mistreatment of TGNC NBI New Yorkers this very body of experts commissioned by the city has been tasked to report on for years. We've been sounding the alarm, while I appreciate the coverage and the perspectives of two of our members being included in that report. Our official report released last year should have been the subject of headlines months ago. When the deadline passed in 2020 for us to publish our first report, city council should have intervened by calling a public hearing. Instead, the deadline continued to lapse for two additional years as we continued reviewing policies, conducting research, advocating for those most impacted by COVID-19 within carceral settings, and drafting the report in question today with excruciatingly minimal support from the Department and Board of Corrections. And where was the council's interest in oversight when de Blasio colluded with Governor Hokel to sell out trans communities housed in gender-aligned housing on Rikers Island and relocate them to upstate prison facilities, many of whom were being held pre-trial? The only way in which the Department of Corrections can claim to be a national leader is in the amount of blood it has on its hands. Our two-hundred-page in-depth report cannot be overshadowed by a ten-minute read. Likewise, its thoroughness cannot be compared to the department's disgracefully mediocre seven-page response. Their disparaging and belittling response demonstrates just how inept and unwilling the Department of Corrections is to work with us in good faith, while promising that it would continue to review its policies to, quote, "support the evolving needs of the TGNC NBI population," end quote. In the aftermath of the report's publication, the department swiftly and effectively cut off our ability to investigate conditions and likewise no longer permits us to the ability to tour facilities to see the conditions for ourselves firsthand. The department's response, their testimony today, and Commissioner Molina's inability to even acknowledge the presence of the task force at today's hearing and our work more broadly, and yesterday's report underscores what this experience has been like for us as a task force. It is reminiscent of how we've been continuously, routinely, and intentionally sidelined and devalued while simultaneously being exploited for the good-intentioned but meaningless symbolism of progressive reform. We've been patronized, we've been pathologized, we've been gaslit, our cries for help went unheard and unresponded to, just like Leilean's. Have any of you, I'm taking a moment to note that I'm speaking practically to an empty council chamber, have any of the council members who attended today's hearing taken the time to read, study, and reflect on your own city-commissioned report to address the issues impacting TGNC NBI people in custody in the city's care? Did you yourself, I repeat, did you yourself read or even glance over the report? Or did a staffer review the chapter summaries and compile notes on your behalf? Are you, the elected person, committed to seriously addressing these issues? Are you committed to valuing our expertise, acting on our policy recommendations, and holding this despotic fascist administration accountable to its amorally just inequities? At a time of unprecedented and unrelenting attacks against gender expansive communities across the country, New York should be the forebearer of hope, of opportunity, of justice for all. As progressive as we claim to be, New York City is failing TGNC NBI New Yorkers. Our liberation, the liberation of transgender, non-binary, and intersex people is liberation for everyone, coast to coast, beyond borders, and across the world. Our issues, injustices, inequities, and disparities are the crossroads of collective struggle. Lack of stable housing, access to higher education, gainful employment, competent health and mental health care, equitable and accessible public services, anti-blackness, xenophobia, antisemitism, and ongoing genocides of Black and Indigenous people internationally is a trans rights issue. It is past time that we recognize and center trans rights as the cornerstone of human rights, because our issues intersect all disparities and struggles across race, gender, and class, from racism and discrimination, mass incarceration, immigration, and acts of hate, even in New York City. Fifty-five years after the Stonewall uprising, fifty-seven years after the Black Cat Tavern, and fifty-eight years after the Compton Cafeteria riots, seventy years after the start of the modern civil rights movement, one-hundred-and-sixty-one years after the emancipation of slavery, one-hundred-and-seventy-six years after the spark of the Women's Rights Movement, two-hundred-and-forty-nine years after the American Revolution for Liberty and Justice for All, five-hundred-and-thirty-two years since the onslaught of colonization and systemic eradication of Native people, our Black, Indigenous, immigrant, gender expansive siblings are still struggling and being left behind. Shame. I will allow fellow members of the task force to speak to the specific findings and recommendations outlined in our, in our report. The substance of my remarks, however, is in sharing our collective experiences vulnerably and transparently, to plead for your solidarity in ensuring that the work of this task force to date and in the future is not done in vain. Today's public hearing alone simply won't be enough. May it be incumbent upon your consciousness to take note and expeditiously on the following requests. Vote affirmatively in support of the legislative initiatives being considered before you today. Mandate the department to engage with us as a stakeholder required to advise on policies and guidelines, to do everything possible to make information and data publicly available, and to work in good faith with the task force moving forward. Invest available resources to sustain the functionality of the task force and to enhance the capability of the Board of Corrections to be better able to facilitate the city-commissioned work and its responsibility to have oversight over the Department of Corrections. Amend the very bill establishing the task force to more clearly define our authority to investigate, review policies, access data, tour city jail facilities, advise on best practices, and provide recommendations on the improvement of public policies and department guidelines. Lastly, collaborate with the city's public advocate to conduct an additional public hearing within the next three months regarding the investigative reporting that was unearthed yesterday and any progress made by the Department of Corrections to productively engage with us, the city's task force on issues impacting TGNC NBI individuals in custody, in good faith efforts as outlined in our collective testimonies and the council's own line of questioning, questioning to the department. In the name of Leilean Polanco and in solidarity with oppressed communities across the five boroughs throughout New York State, from coast to coast and beyond our borders, I thank you.
Thank you all so much, and thank you for staying. I'm going to read some prepared remarks, and then I have some responses as well. So thank you for this opportunity. I know I've been hounding many of you with requests and questions and demands since about May of 2022. I'm really glad that we're here today. My name is Mick Kincaid, I use he/him pronouns, I'm a white trans man, and I'm an attorney. As a lawyer, I have worked at the Prisoners Legal Services of New York, the Sylvia Rivera Law Project, and at the Legal Aid Society of New York City. Since 2015, I have been in the New York City jails, teaching classes in various iterations of the transgender housing unit, which is now called the Special Considerations Unit. I'm a member of this community, and I'm on the ground doing this work, and I have been since 2015. It is with great seriousness that I note my privilege of being physically here, sitting before you with ten years' worth of stories concerning the New York City jails' treatment of transgender, gender nonconforming, non-binary, and intersex people. While I sit in this hearing room, I am protected by all the laws of the City of New York. My name and my pronouns must be respected, I must be allowed access to restrooms, programs, and housing equal to that of any cisgender man. I am allowed to make determinations for my own safety regarding if and how I share any medically private information, and I get to seek out the care that fits my medical needs. If it's deemed medically necessary by my doctor, my insurance must cover it. I am allowed to dress as traditionally masculine or as traditionally feminine as I wish and still maintain my identity, my pronouns, and my name. I get to love who I love without that reflecting on my gender identity or expression. It is my belief, and it is the belief of all the authors of this report, that these same rights apply to every single person in the city jails. Yet the reality is that TGNC NBI people in the city jails cannot consistently and without fear access these rights. Because of these fears, many people chose to not provide testimony, even if anonymously, at today's hearing. I know my colleague Deb and I went to Rikers multiple times over the past week and a half to try and collect testimonies, most of the people we met with refused. I also had scheduled about six appointments with people who are home, off of parole, no longer reporting, and the response from all of them was, "I'd rather move on with my life and not relive this, especially knowing that probably nothing will happen." Which is why the folks who are here today, thank you so much. It's incredibly moving. So the department has said multiple times that they are leaders regarding the treatment of transgender, nonconforming, non-binary, and intersex people in custody, yet as you could see, the folks who sat here before you couldn't even get those terms right. I want to seriously challenge any assertion that providing basic rights and dignity qualifies as leadership. It may well be that the majority of prisons and jails throughout the US fail to treat us as if we are humans, but doing better than that is not good and does not make you a leader. This is not the standard by which I, as a trans person, determine who leads my community. A leader for TGNC NBI people would not refuse to share data, refuse to provide access, make erroneous statements to the press, or deny actual community leaders the ability to participate in and create best practice policies. I underline all these points because I am extraordinarily aware that as of the publishing of the report in August, I was one of only a handful of trans people on the task force, and that my presence on the task force serves as a stamp of authority. At any time, the department can point to me and say they have a transgender person and an attorney, with on-the-ground knowledge that the city jails have been involved since 2015, and therefore the task force is successful. And I need to make it absolutely crystal clear to the council that the department has not only refused to allow us to advise them at every turn, they have consistently acted in disrespectful ways towards our members. There have been multiple times when I have considered leaving this task force because I did not want to lead my community to think that this was somehow meaningful or would change anything. And I have stuck with it mostly because of folks like Sheer and like Grace and like Deb, who show up and do this work against huge odds. We had a unique opportunity to provide knowledge on the lives of folks in the city jails. When we were appointed, there were twenty-two of us, and nine of us identified as TGNC NB. We had no intersex identified people on the panel, and we still don't. At the time we published our report, we had dropped to thirteen members, and only three of us were TNGC NBI identified, and there was only three of us who were right here. Everyone else had to leave. And some of that, yes, was because of COVID and it was because of changes in jobs, but a lot of it had to do with the fact that people did not want to be disrespected on a systematic basis by the Department of Corrections all the time. Did not want to be told that we were lying about what we were experiencing. The local law creating this task force must be altered to be clearer and stronger, otherwise this task force is nothing more than an exercise in traumatizing those of us who are appointed and creating a facade of good press for the city. Believe me, the trauma as a fellow trans person of hearing about the assaults and the rapes and the violence and the daily discrimination is horrible. I have vivid visions of going to Bellevue to meet with survivors of rapes who survived those rapes while in DOC custody, and I can still see the scars, I can see their faces, and they will be with me forever. I would not be on this task force if I did not think there was the possibility that something useful could come from it. And that is why, at this point, we are demanding that DOC take this entity seriously and meet with us in good faith. I know I gain nothing from DOC refusing to grow. My people just get hurt more. I'm not on this task force in order to yell at DOC, I'm on the task force because I want to meet with them in good faith to develop better policies. And you heard today consistently the commissioners say that we would not be considered as part of that, then I want to know why we're here. It's trauma that I don't need, and I believe none of my fellow panelists need either. So I want to talk about a couple of things. The department talked about changes that they have made, and I want to emphasize every single one of those changes was a result of a lawsuit or a pending lawsuit. None of those changes happened because they decided to do those things on their own. They talk about being 2018 the leader by moving the trans housing unit to RMSC, that was because of a lawsuit. And I want to say again, the woman who brought that lawsuit decided not to come here today to speak because she said she wanted to move on with her life, and I hope she can. The department said that they did share the directive with us, so that contradicts statements that they said to the press multiple times in August and throughout the rest of this year that we leaked it. They shared it with us, we received clearance from BOC Legal to share it, and the DOC has had consistent access to the report and its various different drafts since we began drafting it in 2020. So DOC has always had access to that, and any suggestion that they So DOC has always had access to that, and any suggestion that they don't, in my opinion, is a suggestion that they did not look at those drafts and care about them until they were published. I want to emphasize a few more points. The bills before us today are wonderful, and we thank you for them. There are currently one hundred and eighty-five anti-LGBT legislation pieces in the United States right now, and most of them mark gender identity and gender expression. So anything that allows us to live our lives is wonderful, and, and thank you for that. But all of these need some significant work, and I really look forward to working with all of you on them. So 355, we agree with many of the comments that CHS made, that we don't want to do anything that would hamper access to medical care. And none of the people we spoke with talked about the importance of being able to choose the gender identity of their provider. What they spoke with was having competent providers, people who didn't lie to them about the effects of hormones, people who didn't lie to them about the effects of surgeries, people who didn't tell them, "If you take this hormone, you will become sterile." Just absolute lies. So we need more competent care with CHS. We also need them to figure out the contract between CHS Care and Health and Hospitals, in particular the Pride Centers, because we have been told since 2019, and we have documented court documents on this matter, that there will be a contract in order for people to access gender-affirming surgeries. Yet it is 2023, and we were told at our most recent meeting that the number of surgeries provided was less than ten. I said, "Oh my God, that is amazing. That means that someone had a surgery? I had no idea. I thought I would be the first to know." And they said, "Oh no, that could mean zero, too." So we need to know what's happening with that, and people need to have access to that. Absolutely, it is a very challenging thing to recover from intense surgery while in jail. And whenever I work with someone who is looking at a short period of time, I say, "What I will do is I will connect you to care, and you can get surgery when you come home, when it's safer." But for some people, they're inside for three or more years, and in fact, many of our trans clients are, because of issues with bail, issues with reentry and alternative to incarceration programs, et cetera. So they actually have the time to have surgeries and recover. There was a woman most recently, and I think this is probably something that CHS would say in response to the data issue, who was accessing electrolysis in the hopes of receiving a vaginoplasty. She was inside for over two years. She did not finish her electrolysis appointments, and she has now gone to a men's prison without having access surgery. And we happen to know that New York State Docs does not have contracts with any surgical providers. So she is now serving a very long sentence upstate with no hope of accessing that surgery. Again, the, the citywide resource navigator for women and gender expansive people, a wonderful idea. I think we're all very excited about it. I just want to say that the definition of gender expansive in that bill is so broad because it includes gender stereotyping, that the database created would have to be every single alternative to incarceration in the city. Because gender expansive people could include, for example, a feminine cisgender man, an intersex man, a trans man like myself, who wants to go to a men's alternative to incarceration facility. And if that men's alternative to incarceration facility says, "We don't house you here," they are in, they are in denial of the human rights law. So it would have to include every single facility, and that's quite a big ask. There is an LGBTQI reentry providers group chaired by Andrea Williams at the Legal Action Center. I think they'd be wonderful to consort with on this bill. 887, again, a wonderful bill because data is sorely needed, but some of the things that we would need to have added to it were things such as timelines. When, when you asked the commissioner at the beginning of this about where that data came from, and, and he said that data was from today, we have seen in the past that DOC has moved people right before important data times in order for their data to look good. There's no guarantee that those folks are going to stay in gender-lined housing any day past today. In August, right before we published our report, a housing unit at AMKC, which at the time was the only special considerations unit in men's jails, which housed transgender women despite us being promised that it would not house transgender women, all the people in that unit were moved to RMSC. And that unit included cisgender men and trans women who did not want to be at RMSC. They were all moved to RMSC so that the numbers that were reported could say, "We are housing all these trans women at RMSC." Very few of those folks stayed there. To the extent that DOC says that people misrepresent their gender identity, I would point you to that move that DOC did against everyone else's wishes. And say, "You put cis men in rows, you did not ask them where they wanted to be, you did not check in with them, you did not do anything that was appropriate or career-related around this, and then you say people are lying about their gender identities." But what you're doing is you are failing to do your job. So I, again, the number that they were presented today, I would seriously ask, is that the same in two weeks from now? And then finally, on Councilmember Powers's bill, we have submitted extensive edits. There is a coalition, I believe it has fourteen organizations, that are very diverse in terms of who they represent, as well as everyone who is a report author from the task force. And it just, we really need, as Deb said and her testimony, intake is where we need to make an intervention. And the department said this in their reply, the department said this today, and yet they refuse to talk to us about intake and how to make it better. We really need those intake spaces to be the place of first intervention. And with that, I close. Thank you.
Before we move on further, I, I want to say this to close out for service providers. It has been very transformative to watch organizations like the Osborne Association and Exponents and so forth and so forth make their cells available at the expense of sometime having to do the work for corrections by saying what we're exactly looking for, meaning that the same documentation that we have sent them, they will do what their commissioner done today and come across as if they were a part of actually reviewing the report. At no time was this done. So I say, as you understand, knowing those agencies that are mandated to help LGBTQIA and specifically in the last, I'm going to be clear, 2015, are now allocated to make these services relevant in their own programs. So there are organizations that are proactive, not because Corrections has asked us, because we're on the side of receiving those phone calls and going to see those individuals who are detained. And if they get the strength and make it through all that trauma of being in custody, they come to us. And we're here to do that work because this is the work that we say, and that I know that I do, and others do this work. As a council, we cannot say it any clearer. This will continue, and it has the potential of death. The potential of death. Let us not make January 25th a day where you were informed as a council after hearing the sitting commissioner express through modified, prepared, no answers, that you fully understand the magnitude of what this subjects and all those legislation is necessary. Please know this. Thank you.
Thank you. That, thank you. Well, I was going to say, Grace, that, that was my question about service providers and how they've been, and I don't want to say forced, because I know why you all do this work. Like, you all do this work out of, out of love, and out of need, and out of experience. But like, the fact that, I think, something that was brought up in terms of voting on the bills, mandating collaboration and more resources, that goes to exactly what you're talking about. So I just want to thank you for saying that. Councilmember Chair Caban, I know you want, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of follow-ups. But I want to start by expressing gratitude and, and just also just love. Like, I may not, I know some of you personally, but I may not know you, but as part of our community, I love you, and I appreciate the work that you're, you're doing. Let me get a clip, sorry. I had to stand, I couldn't sit for any longer. Yeah, I'm getting old. I, I wanted to ask, first of all, duly noted on, you know, I share in your concern, and I, I missed asking about it, but why Ms. Munsky wasn't here. I, it's a question I have as well, and we have follow-up questions that we will send to, to DOC to get answered. But I, I had a question for you, Doctor. You talked a little bit about care, obviously, in that same, we referenced it a lot, that in that same city article that appeared yesterday, there was a quote, an officer quoted as saying, you know, "I'm going to say eighty percent of them really tries to, they take their hormones, and they go for their surgery." And we've talked a little bit about whether that's happening or not, and I think we need to follow up with, with correctional health services. But for you specifically, what are the, can you go a little bit deeper into what the medical standards concerning TGNC and B folks, identity and hormone replacement therapy surgeries and other interventions, and whether those standards change when you're institutionalized? And the last thing I'll add for context to that, that I thought was disturbing, and I'm hoping that you can expand on a little bit, was that, and this goes to show how little they are familiar with the issues of, of the community, is that the decision to have surgery is not a litmus test for whether or not a person is trans, and that is a very personal decision as to whether to take that kind of medical intervention or action. And so that was deeply disturbing, so I'm hoping you could touch on, on the importance of that a little bit, but also kind of flesh out what some of those medical standards for the community are, and how, how, if at all, they change when you're institutionalized.
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to answer that, and thank you for your question. And I just want to say that I know that I'm here in the capacity of, I'm not a medical provider, I'm a mental health provider, I'm a psychologist, but I'm happy to answer questions about the standards of care that are, you know, published by the World Professional Association of Transgender Health. And I would just want to recognize that the incredible importance of the lived experience that folks are talking about today, and that that perhaps supersedes what any governing or, you know, institutional body would say about what is correct care, that we should be listening to people about the care that they need. That said, many institutions follow the guidelines of WPATH, and currently they have issued something called the Standards of Care Eight, which is the most recent version of the standards of care. They have evolved over time to be more, somewhat more justice and equity focused. However, they do, you know, present barriers and gates for people to, hurdles for people to go over, gates for people to pass through, oftentimes placing a provider in a role where they are making the ultimate decision about whether or not somebody can provide informed consent for care. But ultimately, it does just boil down to, regardless of the institution that somebody is in, regardless of the place where they live, regardless of, you know, anything other than, you know, their ability to provide informed consent, they should have access to any kind of gender-affirming care that they desire. What informed consent means is just the ability to understand the risks and rewards of any kind of surgical intervention, and to be able to make a decision to, you know, take part in that, in that surgery, right? To be able to just say, "I, I understand everything that is being laid out for me about what could potentially go right, what could go wrong, what I will have to do to care for myself, and I am of, you know, sound mind to be able to provide that consent." That does not mean that people who are experiencing any kind of mental health issue, or people with any kind of developmental differences, any kind of neurodiversity can't provide informed consent as well. They certainly can. The way that informed consent is achieved is just through communication with that person until, you know, to make sure that we are responding to their needs and giving them the information that they need. So just to reiterate, there is no difference in the care that is provided to folks whether or not they are in a carceral setting or in any other institutional setting. I think that was your first question, and let me know, does that answer, Councilmember Caban, does that answer your first part of your question?
Yes, it does. I mean, feel free to expand if you think there's something that was, that was missed, but thank you.
Yeah, the only other thing that I might say about it is that the, you know, standards of care that have been issued, I went to the WPATH conference this year, and the standards of care that have been issued, there is a special section about institutional care that relates to, unfortunately, that WPATH chose to group together, where WPATH chose to group together institutional care in nursing homes, any other type of institutional facility alongside correctional facilities. And what, you know, it's unfortunate that they didn't distinguish the differences between being held in those different types of settings, because there are stark differences in the way that people are able to access care, much as, you know, Mick mentioned, and the ability that people have and the flexibility of what they're wearing, what they're doing, and their access to resources. However, their main recommendation that they provided was just to provide more education and training to Department of Corrections, to correctional staff, in being more gender-affirming. That was the only difference.
If I'm allowed, I just want to make one quick comment, which is that we have heard from people, and this is not something that we have at length in the report, but we hope maybe in the next report we can go into more, who are choosing either to have access to surgeries and hormones, or to not access surgery and hormones based upon how they think they will be housed. So there are a number of trans women I have spoken with who did not wish to pursue vaginoplasties, but did in order to help increase their chance of being housed as a woman. That's why we need something like GURD, that's why we need the amended version of Powers's bill, because it needs to be clear that you don't need to do incredibly intensive things to your body to be housed as a woman. That absolutely needs to be your choice because it is right for you and how you are perceiving yourself in the world. And yet we have heard from trans women who have undergone that because of their fear that they will be housed as men again upon a second arrest or upon a violation of parole. And likewise, I just want to say, we've also heard from many people who, upon hearing that they will not spend their prison time in women's facilities or in men's facilities as well for, for trans men, that they choose to stop taking hormones in order that they can pass better for the length of their sentence. And so both of these things are really horrific effects of the fact that we don't have strong housing laws, and the fact that it implicates medical and mental health. I just want to really emphasize, I, I don't know how to tell anyone who's not trans about how important it is to make the decisions you need to make for your own body. But it is, it is, it's really disturbing to hear that people look at their, their life ahead and say, "Well, if I'm going to spend three years in this facility, I need to do this thing to my body in order to survive." That's not a position anyone else is placed in.
Agreed, and thank you. And we will, I appreciate you going into some detail on how we can improve the language of the bills as well, and, and we took notes on not just what you mentioned, but also people to work with in collaboration, because that's incredibly important. So I just want to, I want to thank this panel for your time, for what you do, for being here, waiting this long, for listening to the Department of Correction and being underwhelmed is the understatement I'm going to use right now, incredibly exhausting and frustrating and raging. So thank you. Thank you for your testimony, thank you for your service. We look forward to the next report, to working with you, and to, again, voting on the bills, mandating better collaboration, more resources, seeing how we can expand the task force oversight, and including those amendments in that language to the bills. Thank you.
I'm so sorry, are, are, there are no more questions? May I say one more thing? I apologize. Okay. I just want, I had circled some things, just to clarify. At the beginning of his testimony, Commissioner Melina said that one of the reasons why they were leaders is because they do not go based upon medical diagnosis or medical exam. Those two things are not allowed under the Prison Rape Elimination Act, so the fact that they don't do things that are illegal doesn't give them cookies. The task force desperately needs a Spanish translator, and we need support staff. We don't have anyone from the Trans Latina Coalition, anyone from Colectivo Transhirrendo on because they primarily speak in Spanish, and we don't have the capacity for that. So we are really missing all of our Spanish-speaking TGNC and BI folks. We desperately need that. You know, the four of us are all paid by our organizations for the labor. If anyone is not part of an organization that pays for the labor, then they really can't participate, and that has made a huge issue. Commissioner Melina said that BOC did not tour the facilities, they sat, sat on their behinds. Heather Bergess, who's been on the BOs, on the task force since the beginning, did tour the facilities throughout COVID, and I just wanted to say- the facilities throughout COVID, and I just wanted to say that because that's an extreme slight to make. If there are people who are better situated than us to advise, which the commissioner said multiple times, we'd love to know who they are and then place them on the task force, we'll work with them. I know Docs works with NCTE, the National Center for Transgender Education, if that's who it is, you know, I'm happy to call them up, I know folks who work there. Commissioner Molina said we refused a meeting, it's because he allowed only three of us to meet with him, and he said it would be a meet and greet. We would not be able to discuss anything of meaning during that meeting, so we said that's not worth our time. And then, two more things. One thing that we want to talk about in the next task force report is about the volunteers and the trainings, we didn't actually get access to any of those. I have sat through the PRIA trainings. One of the security trainings that is used uses a video of a trans woman to show how not to respond to something. I sat in that training, all of the people being trained with me said that's a man, and no one corrected them except for me, and I was told to be quiet. So those trainings need help. And then finally, regarding not outing anyone, I completely understand that, look, I get that, none of us have that privilege, so.
And if I may, I want to recognize, Rachel, you have your hand up, right, doctor? Oh, I don't know if you had your hand up. Please, then.
Thank you. If there aren't any other questions, I just want to highlight a few comments as well. As Mick mentioned, we've noticed that DOC will often move people around very temporarily, right before their reporting is due. So I urge you in two weeks to check in with them and see what numbers they'll give you. But further, you know, in addition to that, the data that they have is severely inaccurate. And the reason for this is because they are only counting the numbers of people who have felt safe enough to out themselves to a staff person at DOC. Their numbers are a lot lower than the actual numbers, and we know this because collectively, as public defenders on the task force, we represent more people than they tell us exist in DOC custody, right? So their numbers are very much underreported and inaccurate. And another point I just want to make, Commissioner Molina said that currently 11 trans people in their custody are not housed in alignment with their gender identity, and they are not housed there involuntarily. That number is also a lot lower than the actual number. Again, collectively, as public defenders here, we represent more than 11 people who are housed misaligned with their gender identity against their will. So just want to say that their numbers are not accurate, and if we're going to make, if there's going to be a data bill, there also needs to be a way to meaningfully collect that data, because that's not happening right now. And Chair Coban, I just want to thank you for your line of questioning, highlighting the discrimination that gender expansive people face in housing determination. What it comes down to, what everything we are talking about today comes down to, is that they do not affirm people's gender identities, and they do not see trans women as women, and they do not see trans men as men, and they do not affirm non-binary people. As you, you know, demonstrated with your line of questioning, cis women's disciplinary records, their criminal records are not considered when determining their housing placement, whether they're going to be in a men's jail or a female jail. Those factors are routinely considered for trans and gender expansive people, and people's gender identities are being used against them as punishment. Not that long ago, Ward and Phipps went into the SCU and told the trans women in the SCU, things have changed around here. If any of you break any of the rules, you're going right back to the men's jails. It's no secret this is happening, right? And what it comes down to is people are not being respected and affirmed for who they are. That's what all this boils down to. Again, thank you for your time, and we hope to continue these conversations.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you for bringing up just the lack of affirmation as being something so very significant. And I just found even the lack of, like, including the acronym of the task force to be disrespectful. So thank you, thank you very much, thank you for your time, again, for waiting this long. I want to bring up the next panel, who's also been patient. I'm going to read the names from the slips as was turned in for the next panel. We have Jane Doe, Alyssa Crespo, representing, Morgan Everhart on behalf of Alyssa Rodriguez, Robin Marr on behalf of Ms. Regina.
I just want to note that from moving forward, we are going to put a clock on public testimony in order to accommodate everybody present today.
Donnie.
It's already on, actually, don't worry.
Thank you.
You can start as soon as you're ready.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay, all right.
We'll start on the left.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Jane, and I was incarcerated from 2017 to 2019. So when I was first went through the system, I was placed in Rosie, which is a women's jail. So to me, it sounds right, because I'm a woman, I identify as a woman, so I'm in a women's jail. But as soon as I revealed, I told the doctor that I am a transgender woman, I was immediately transferred to...
I am so, so sorry, but would you mind pulling the microphone a little bit closer to, I have a little bit of hearing loss, and so I'm having some trouble hearing you.
So then I was immediately transferred to MBC, and it's a men's jail, but they have a unit called Transgender Housing Unit. So I was there, even I was there, I was still fine, because I have an individual cell, each person has his own individual cell, and we have our own solid door, so nobody's going to bother me. Now, after a while, I think about a year, the THU, which is the Transgender Housing Unit, was canceled, so I was transferred to Rosie. In Rosie, they, now they have a housing that's for LGBT. But inside this new unit, they don't have, it's like a dorm, I don't have my own cell, so when people get in a fight, and when pepper spray was being used, I had asthma, I couldn't breathe, so I said, you know, I complained about that, and I was transferred to Brooklyn House at the time. So it was a men's housing, and I, I don't want to go, but I have no choice. So which is there that I was experienced very terrible things, which I will explain later in a few seconds. So, and because of what happened, I was transferred back to MBC, Manhattan Detention Center. And at the time, they have something like, almost like a LGBT housing, it's not for transgender, but they had different kind of LGBT people there, and I still feel safe because I have my own cell, I have my own solid door, so I'm kind of like, okay, I'm just, you know, with myself, I can be safe in my own cell, I already come off myself, because I don't feel safe when I get out. So I was there until I was transferred to Oyster, and then to Woodburn, and both of which, they are men's facility. Now, from my own experience, when I look back, I can say that I was fine, and I feel safe when I was in a women's jail, which I identify with, because I identify as a woman, and also I feel safe when I have my own cell, with my own solid door. For example, when I was in Rosie, I was actually fine when I first in Rosie, but then, when I explained to the doctor, hey, I need hormone, because I'm a transgender woman, and they said, no, 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 you cannot stay here. But I said, all my state IDs said I'm a woman, so I was dumbfounded at that moment, why my state ID was overturned by the Department of Correction. I don't know why, but I just feel like my right was overridden. And the other thing is, when I was in jail that has my own individual cell and my own solid door, I also feel safe. For example, as I was in THU, Transgender Housing Unit, when I was in MBC. Now, what is not fine is when I was in all men's facility, or when I was in housing, which I don't have my own solid door. For example, when I was in Brooklyn House, not soon after, when I was in Brooklyn House, I was assaulted twice in two consecutive days, not once, but twice. So, and the response is, oh, we're going to protect you. And it was put in a box to protect me. So all of a sudden, I was traumatized, and I was then sent to another facility. But to bring, to bring this issue to light is that the assailants know what they're They assaulted me when it was in lock-in time. And nobody's supposed to be walking the hallway, everybody's supposed to lock in, but they are professional, they know what they're doing. They are able to pick all the gates, now those are heavy gates, imagine that, they are gates in a correction facility, and they were able to pick all the gates to gain access to me, to assault me. And during that process, everything was in camera, everything was recorded. And I just wonder, I was yelling for help, where are the police officers? Do they care? I just wonder.
And I just want to, if you can wrap up, because I want to make sure I get, they have a couple dozen people that want to testify.
Okay, sure, of course.
And thank you for, for sharing, and I'm so sorry.
Okay, all right. So, but to boil down to, the fact is, I just want to state like, two main things. It's very important for transgender people to be housed in a place where we have our own individual cell, with solid door, where people cannot gain access to us, because we are like an easy target, we are like a shining object for people, for men, to vent their anger and their energy and their frustration on. And the second thing is, and equally important, is people should have the right to be housed according to the identity that they, and the gender that they identify with. And last but not least, transgender rights is human rights. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I just want everyone to know, many of you have been here before, but your testimony does go in full on the record with the council, to be memorialized forever. We do have a clock that goes off after two minutes, so if you could just not, you know, to stop in the middle of your sentence, but just wrap up your last thought, so we can get to all the people that have waited patiently. And thank you very much, thank you.
My name is Morgan Everhart, I'm a criminal defense attorney who represented Alyssa Rodriguez. I wish that Alyssa could be here today with us to tell her own story, but she died before she got the chance to do that. Alyssa described some of her experience in words, so I'm going to read what she wrote. She said, "I am a trans Latina who has transitioned since age 13. I've been through hell with DOC. First, I'm at Rosie's, then THU, then AMKC, where I was raped two times, because after the first rape, I was returned to the same jail where I was raped again. I was raped two times, and I will never forget the loneliness, pain, destruction this has caused in my life. I can only describe what Alyssa experienced inside Rikers as hell. Alyssa had an army of people advocating for her, many of whom are in this room today. And even then, she was repeatedly assaulted and harassed. She was moved from THU to AMKC, she was in an open dorm with cis men, where she was raped in the showers. She took the risk of reporting the rape immediately. She was taken to Bellevue, she got a rape kit. And then, when she was discharged back to the island, they placed her right back in the men's facility at AMKC. Even though, as her lawyers, we were ringing every possible alarm bell we could, we were talking to PRIA, to DOC, to MACJ, everyone knew what had happened, and yet, they put her right back into protective custody, in quotes, where she was raped a second time in under a week. Again, she reported it immediately, she went to Bellevue, she got a rape kit. The rape, the harassment, the trauma that she experienced was entirely preventable. She filed a lawsuit against DOC, she won, her lawyers won, I think, the largest settlement for somebody who's been sexually harassed at Rikers, or sexually assaulted, I should say, but she didn't get to live to see that. I represented Alyssa for, I think, a year and a half after she was released, and I'll try to be brief, but I think it's important to note the violence of what happens inside of Rikers doesn't end when someone leaves Rikers, the system perpetuates it. She had taken, I think, you know, what we call a treatment plea, right, which means if she did treatment, drug treatment successfully, she gets a lesser charge, but if she's unsuccessful, they hang a huge prison sentence over your head, which meant that every court date that she came back for the next year and a half, she was terrified at the very real possibility that she was going to go right back to the place where she was assaulted. And I think it was, the judges, the DAs, everyone in the courtroom was so apologetic about what had happened to her at Rikers, but they also had absolutely no problem threatening her with more prison, and threatening to send her right back to jail if she wasn't complying with treatment in the way that they wanted her to. And I think that we saw the physical toll that took on Alyssa. I can say, before one court appearance, she, she had epilepsy, she had a seizure in the hallway, I came outside and she was out cold on the floor. Before another court appearance, she was so terrified the judge was going to put her in jail, my colleague Deb, who testified earlier, was holding her hair back as she was vomiting in the toilet. And I say that because the ongoing threat of sending her back to the place where she knew she would never be protected was very real.
If you could just wrap up.
Yeah, I will say that she finished her treatment court plea, I put, included a photo of us from her last day, because she was so thrilled that she didn't have to face that possibility anymore. And unfortunately, she died just a few months later. was holding her hair back as she was vomiting in the toilet. And I say that because the ongoing threat of sending her back to the place where she knew she would never be protected was very real.
If you could just wrap up.
Yeah. I will say that she finished her treatment court plea. I included a photo of us from her last day because she was so thrilled that she didn't have to face that possibility anymore. And unfortunately, she died just a few months later. She didn't get a chance to testify here today, but I know that she would have. And she appreciates everyone here who has. So I thank you for listening to her story.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Robin Marr. I'm the Chief Practice Officer at the Bronx Defenders. And I'm here to share the testimony of Ms. Regina, who is a currently incarcerated client of the Bronx Defenders. Dear City Council, my name is Ms. Regina. I identify as a transgender woman. I have experienced a lot of discrimination that is systematic because I am a transgender woman. I'm currently incarcerated at Rosie's. But before being transferred to Rosie's, I was at EMTC for several weeks. This is the second time in a few months I have been incarcerated. Each time DOC knew that I am transgender, but made me wait in the men's jails for a long time before transferring me to Rosie's. A few years ago, I was incarcerated at DOC in the men's jail and was being harassed on a regular basis. I requested to be moved to RMSC, but no one listened to me. One of the other inmates threw boiling hot water on me because of my transgender identity, and I suffered from severe third-degree burns. It was only then that they agreed to move me to Rosie's, where I was much safer as a transgender woman. On October 24th, 2022, I was arrested and sent to EMTC, a men's jail at Rikers Island, even though I requested to be sent to Rosie's. I was at EMTC for over a week before I was transferred to Rosie's. I was told I needed to complete my 10-day quarantine before they could move me. During the time I was at EMTC, I was abused, harassed, and targeted by other inmates because of my gender identity. I was physically assaulted by a male inmate and threatened with violence every day. I was released after spending some time at Rosie's. On December 29th, 2022, I was arrested again, and the same thing happened all over again. DOC knew I was a transgender woman, but they did not send me to Rosie's. They sent me to EMTC again. I had to wait several weeks this time for them to move me to Rosie's. I kept asking them to move me to Rosie's over and over again, but it took them so long. During that time, I suffered very much. The entire dorm found out that I am transgender and teased me all the time. That really affected my mental health. Even though I am at Rosie's now, I'm still suffering mentally from all the trauma. Thank you for the opportunity to share this testimony today.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity for me to share a testimony from a client, LES client. My name is Gia Love. I am the Director of Programs at New York Transgender Advocacy Group. This testimony was provided by a client to a staff attorney with legal aid over a series of meetings. I am a transgender woman. I was moved from another state to MIC to clear warrant. The other state housed me as a man, so DOC put me in the men's intake too. I told DOC that I'm a woman and that I need female housing and I need my hormones. I told them I was so scared in the men's jail. I didn't tell any of the people I was with that I am a woman. I was scared of what they would do to me. On August 5th, I was told that I was approved to go to women's housing. I was so relieved. I was told to pack up all my things and get ready to move. I was all ready to go. And then, in front of everyone in my unit, the officer said I couldn't be moved because my unit was on COVID quarantine. The officer said I couldn't go to Rosie anymore, couldn't be moved to women's housing because I needed to stay in COVID quarantine in the men's housing. But he said this in front of everyone in the unit. Everyone suddenly knew who I was and what was happening. That evening, a group of men assaulted me in the shower. They were saying awful derogatory things. They didn't know who I was before. They assaulted me because I was outed. It was terrible. I filed a Priya complaint, and I called my lawyer. I went to the medical clinic and told, and they told me not to worry that they wouldn't send me back to the same unit where I was assaulted. I was sent back to the same unit where I was assaulted. I slept in the same unit that night in the same room as the men who assaulted me. DOC said because of COVID, I couldn't be moved at all. I had to stay there with these men. From legal aid, this client eventually got RMSC and women's housing. In the course, excuse me, in the course of our representation, we reached out to DOC on multiple occasions in concern of her safety. And DOC did not once reply, acknowledging the harm done to her or suggest that anyone involved in these incidents would face the repercussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that. And please express our appreciation to these individuals for bringing this story forward and shedding just light on what actually goes on inside of the facilities versus a lot of what we hear in these chambers. So thank you to this panel. And thank you for submitting your testimony. Thank you. I'm going to call up Maritza Enriquez on behalf of Kathy C. Shaity Molina, representing. Laura Rolston, on behalf of Kirby Isiano. And Diana Griffith, on behalf of Angel. And I want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Wrestler Grimoli. Oh, in person. He's totally here. He is here, I'm sorry.
It's his hologram.
Sorry.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Maritza Enriquez. I'm with the LGBTQ Law and Policy Unit at the Legal Aid Society. And I'm here to submit testimony of Kathy, a 66-year-old transgender woman who was assaulted on Rikers Island on November 7th, 2022. This was transcribed from an audio interview conducted on January 23rd, 2023. Ms. Kathy wanted to come and testify in person, but ongoing medical concerns related to her assault kept her from being here today. I was on Rikers Island for five months, and I was there because I failed to go to court. I missed my court date, and I was remanded to Rikers. And to think back on why I got there is crazy to me. I completely forgot I had court. But I came back and apologized profusely for missing my court date. The judge simply looked at me and said, it's okay. To ensure it doesn't happen again, we will set a bail of $50,000. And at that point, I couldn't hear a single thing. I knew I was going to Rikers. I just broke down. I haven't committed any violent crimes, so it's crazy that my punishment is to live in violence. When I got there, they sent me to the North Infirmary Command because of my diabetes and heart disease. When I got to the dorm, there were several inmates at the gate, and they were yelling and telling the guard, they can't come in here. We don't want any faggots in the dorm. This motherfucker has tits, and we don't want him here. The guard replied, you cannot tell us what to do, and she is coming in the dorm. So they let me in. Upon arrival, I immediately started making my bed. And as I was making my bed, one of the inmates hit me so hard on the back of my head with a cane, the part that you hold the cane with, that it broke in half. And yet, he continued to beat me over the head so badly that I had a lump here. She gestured to the top of her head. And then, back here, to the back of her skull. It looked like a softball, a big lump. And they brought me to an outside hospital, Bellevue, took x-rays, and said everything was, quote, "all right." But I have had headaches, dizziness, and my ears have been ringing ever since November 7th, when the attack happened. I was at the infirmary for medical care, and instead, I was assaulted. The inmates there were also there for medical care, people on crutches, in wheelchairs, et cetera. But lo and behold, in a hospital setting, I was still assaulted because I am transgender. There is women's housing at Rosie's, but I was not granted that, and instead housed with men, leading to my assault. When I came back from the hospital, officers in squad gear escorted me to my new dorm. I was still at NIC, still with men. The officers announced that I would be staying there despite opposing opinions, and that if anything happened to me, the inmates would be punished. I immediately began to cry. I was so humiliated. All the inmates felt threatened, and they all had me to blame. Closed Rikers Island, it is a bad place, not just for trans people, for people in general. I have seen young kids come in and get cut, stabbed, and I knew one who lost an eye. I met a man who was assaulted with hot water from the coffee pot, where it looked like his skin was melting in real time. And all of this happened at NIC, in the hospital. I believe, since the last time I was incarcerated, things have gotten worse. It is even violent for female correction officers who are verbally and physically assaulted by male corrections officers. I saw one walk up behind a woman CO, grab her behind and grope her and press his genitals onto her backside. She looked in shock like she didn't know what to do. I am no angel, and I have been incarcerated, but Rikers Island is like hotel hell. If you are sent there, you need to be careful. As a trans woman, I have not seen any positive changes. It has gotten so much scarier in the last few years, and not only for transgender people, but for women and anyone feminine and seen as weak or vulnerable. It is incredibly dangerous. Last week, I went to court, and the guard was harassing me because I was wearing a hat in court. Women are allowed hats in court. He was very nasty to me and told me that I needed to remove it. I replied, I am a trans woman and will keep it on. He insisted, and then went on to escalate the issue. But the judge affirmed me. The court officer glowered at me, but I would not let myself be bullied, even though I have been punished for standing up for myself before. When I served time in Attica, there was a guard who harassed me and other inmates all the time screaming, you fucking faggots. So humiliating and so depressing. I wrote a complaint and sent it to the Attorney General. But after I filed the complaint, I was harassed endlessly by prison staff. They would come into my cell and nitpick and tell me that I was breaking rules when I wasn't. They would take my things away. And if you try to stand up for yourself, as is your human right, you are met with more punishment since you are not going against one officer, but a fraternity. They label you a troublemaker if you complain against any of them and punish you for it by harassment and putting you in the box. But after I got parole and came home after all of that, I received a letter saying that they suspended the officer because he was on social media saying that he, quote, "bullies the faggots in Attica." I called it the Department of Corruption. They didn't correct anything. There was never any support for me. We were there for one reason, to be punished for things we have done in the past. There was nothing rehabilitating me to ensure I would not act as I had to get me in there. I even brought this up to the judge, and the charges just make it harder to get work and move on with my life. And it's so lonely in there. They make it sound so simple when you arrive and explain the procedures, and then there I am with a cracked head. A female captain walked in and saw me after the attack and hollered, oh, my God, what happened to you? Because my head was so swollen, it looked like a softball. She took photos of me and the broken cane. I did not press charges, as that can open the doors for more violence.
If you could just wrap, if you could just wrap up.
But when I got to CHS, the doctor took one look at me and said, oh, it's just a lump. No big deal. I said, make sure you write down what happened and all the details. My neck still hurts and pops, and my ears are still ringing. I still remember hearing people laughing when I was getting beaten, and some half-heartedly, someone half-heartedly asking for my assailant to stop. Rikers needs to close, and the box needs to be abolished. It is the cruelest thing you can do to someone. I used to be put in the box allegedly for my protection as a trans woman, and I felt like a caged animal, not a human being.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Griffith, and I'm a prisoners' rights advocate at the Bronx Defenders. And today, I'm going to be reading the testimony of Angel, who's one of our incarcerated clients. My name is Angel. I'm a non-binary person currently incarcerated in a men's jail at DOC. I spent a few months at the female facility at Rosie's. Before I was transferred to Rosie's, I was in a male facility originally. I asked to be transferred to Rosie's to avoid being discriminated against as a non-binary person. I thought it would be safer there. But upon moving to Rosie's, I experienced even more discrimination. The staff at Rosie's would call me inappropriate names, such as hairy tranny. They would tell me, and trans women, that we were men, and made other statements that were harmful to my mental health. The staff at Rosie's made it very clear to us that they didn't want trans people there. Every day seemed like an uphill battle. One of the CEOs wanted to get me off the facility, so she made up a lie that I threatened her. The lie was proven to be untrue, but the deputy removed me from Rosie's anyway. If they're going to be staff at DOC working with trans people, they should be trained on how to do so respectfully. Being in jail is already hard enough for anyone. But being a non-binary person in jail feels impossible to survive. I hope that future inmates don't have to experience the trauma I and so many others went through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Rolson. I'm a social worker with the Bronx Defenders, testifying on behalf of my client, Ms. Kirby Isiano. Dear City Council, my name is Kirby Isiano. I have unfortunately been in DOC custody for two years as a transgender female. I identify as a woman, but for most of my incarceration, I have been housed in the men's jails at DOC. I have been at EMTC, VCBC, AMKC, and RMSC. DOC continues to move me around all the time, placing me in situations where I faced harm and even danger due to my transgender identity. I have always followed the rules and DOC protocol in reporting such situations, but I have never received a permanent solution to keep me safe. Most recently, I was forced into protective custody in a men's jail allegedly because there was no room in the LGBTQ designated housing at AMKC. Protective custody to me is not a healthy or safer environment because I am placed there with gang members seeking separation from general population, which results in them harassing and trying to control those of us in the LGBTQ community. For example, they force us to wash their clothes for free and engage in sexual acts in order to be able to stay there safely. Other transgender people have fought their way out and have been thrown out due to refusing to engage in sexual acts. I have avoided these confrontations by isolating myself in my cell and thanks to God, not needing to depend on others for support because I have my family's support. Most transgender people don't have this kind of family support. DOC officers are aware of what is going on and the harassment that the transgender community faces on a daily basis. However, due to their own fear of confrontation with the inmates, there is no one we can go to for help. There is not much mental health services can do to help us, and now inmate movement has been left to a department that is not aware of what is happening inside the housing units. If the movement department knew what was going on, maybe they wouldn't force me into dangerous situations, such as being moved to protective custody at VCBC or AMKC. Even when I was transferred to RMSC, a women's jail, I experienced discrimination by female captains and officers when they reminded me every day that I, in quotes, "was born a male." When I was transferred from AMKC to RMSC, DOC officers forcibly removed my wig at intake, which was the one item I had in here that allowed me to express my gender and feel at peace amongst other women. This one act that seemed so unimportant to them made my stay at RMSC uncomfortable and caused me to be ostracized. I have always felt oppressed, bullied, and targeted by DOC. All of this discrimination and harassment for the past two years has affected my mental health significantly. I've had to start taking antidepressant and anti-anxiety medications just to cope with my environment on a daily basis. The different incidents I've experienced have resulted in me being diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder. Sadly, I have attempted suicide twice in the past two years. Nevertheless, I wake up each morning looking forward to the day that I will be released and return to the community and my family. It is that which motivates me and keeps me strong during everything that I face while in here. If I could help change DOC and alleviate my problems here, I would. And that's why I'm speaking out about it. I hope this testimony brings change to me and people in my community soon. Thank you for listening.
Good afternoon. My name is Shaity Molina. I'm an investigator with the Bronx Defenders. The testimony I will be reading today is anonymous. It is provided by one of our clients who is currently incarcerated. Hello, I am a transgender man currently incarcerated at the female jail at DOC Rosie's. I want to share with you how I have been treated here as a transgender man. There is very little understanding of our community here at Rikers Island. There is very little understanding of our community here at Rikers Island. I use he/him pronouns, but most captains and individuals I come across continue to call me she, even though I am not a she, I am a he. The constant misgendering results in conflicts and altercations, because even though they are aware of my gender, they continue to misgender me. Every time that happens on a daily basis, I get very emotional, because when you identify as a male, why should someone keep referring to you as female? That is disrespectful, ostracizing, and excluding me from myself. I also want to share that it is not right that there is a unit for transgender women, but not for transgender men. There is nowhere for us to feel safe and like we belong here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. And again, please convey to these individuals, we know that we can’t possibly understand what they are going through, but for them to put their experiences to paper and bring them here publicly is incredibly important to us. So I just want to thank you all for representing on their behalf, and of course, for the work that you do in your own respective organizations. Thank you. Do you need a bio break or anything? No, I’m okay. All right, we’re going to go to the next panel. That includes Rocco Rinaldi Rose representing, Sharon White Harrigan, Zachary Katz Nelson, and Sophia Upple representing. All on Zoom. I thought I saw one of them, but... Rocco, do you want to start?
Yeah, I’ll start. My name is Rocco Rinaldi Rose. I was asked to testify by Mick Kincaid and Rachel, Rachel Golden. And I am testifying on behalf of LB, who was a transgender woman who was housed at Rosies, then removed to a men’s jail, where she stayed for the rest of her time within DOC custody, and she is currently in a men’s prison. Here’s her testimony. Rikers Island has not only robbed me of my right to my body, it has robbed me of my right to be treated like a lady. I am denied women’s housing because of acts of violence by people who hate me for no reason, attack me for no reason, want to kill my kind off the earth for no reason. Please listen to me, they even placed me back at the same housing where I was raped in the shower. Can you imagine being made to take a shower in the same stall where you were raped for months? And they wonder why I act violent. Please, my voice should be heard. Let me say this, being a trans female inside of a men’s jail is the most tremendous thing a human soul can endure. We get discriminated against, verbally abused, and assaulted. People are taught that being friends with, talking, living with, even standing next to, an LGBTQ+ member is forbidden. I have one ask of the City Council. Go to a men’s housing unit and tell them that you plan to house an LGBTQ+ person in the unit, and watch in horror at the protests and threats that will surely come. And as for officers, they have no LGBTQ+ awareness. They have only two housing areas for us, but they have 100 different options for gang members. They get mad at us when we cannot all be housed together, and they become verbally abusive, like it’s our fault that people hate, despise, and outcast us. I was on suicide watch, and my officer was supposed to watch me in my cell, but he left. When he left, I was sexually assaulted. They kept me in a holding pen for seven days. I did not shower. I had no blankets, nothing to cover me.
Thank you, time has expired. If you could just wrap up your last thought, please, that was the time.
I did not brush my teeth, and sometimes I didn’t even eat. The person bringing me food didn’t want a faggot or the thing to eat. Those are not even half of the names he called me. You would think that seven days of this treatment was bad enough, but on the seventh day, they let a man into my cell, and he sexually assaulted me. This was on camera, but they didn’t do anything. DOC said I wanted it and got mad that I made them do paperwork, because I wanted to go to the hospital for an HIV prevention pill. When I said I wanted to go, they said, “Can you not?” They deny me going to a women’s jail because they say I’m too violent. I’m violent because I was raped. I’m violent because I was in housing with 20 other weightlifting, push-up-doing men with no four CO to protect me. I deal with unjustified hate. I deal with antagonism at its max. I deal with wanting to kill myself because I was robbed, the satisfaction from the people who want to kill me. I could have died multiple times, and the sad and honest part is that I am grateful I was only raped and attacked during my time at Rikers. The Legal Aid Society asked me what the most important rule change would be. My answer is that any rule that will not have a person feel grateful they were sexually assaulted and not killed will work for starters. I fear that asking for anything more is too much to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. We’re going to go to Sharon, then Zach, then Sophia. Thank you, Rocco.
Thank you so much, Chair, Chairperson Kalina Rivera. Thank you for holding this vital public hearing. I am the Reverend Sharon White Harrigan, the Executive Director of the Women’s Community Justice Association, also known as WCJA, and of the Justice for Women Task Force, and would like to express our organization’s fervent support for Intro 831, which would amend the city’s administrative code to establish a new citywide resource navigator for women and gender expansive persons. WCJA also leads the Beyond Rosies campaign, where we advocate for policies and proposals that would reduce the population housed at the Rose MC Center, and in doing so, will expedite the closure of Rosies. So it is important to remember that this is not a new crisis. There has been an urgent humanitarian crisis affecting GNC people at Rikers Island for decades. Moreover, this is not a secret. The creation of the task force was in no small part a reaction to the tragic death of Leyline Polanco in 2019, and the repeated failures to respond to the unique needs of the gender expansive population in custody and requires a unique and holistic approach. Establishing a gender expansive resource navigator program is crucial to achieving this goal. Intro 831’s Resource Navigator Program will assist women and GNC folks during and after their incarceration, bolster the city’s database on alternatives to incarceration, provide support and outreach to educate those in the legal system and the broader public on the new programs and services available to individuals who identify as women and/or gender expansive folks, increasing the likelihood for successful reentry at the incarceration. We cannot afford to wait during a time of acute crisis. We must decarcerate now, that so many have for so long ignored or been able to turn a blind eye and refuse to accept daily reports of despair and death. This must become an opportunity for New York City to enact real, robust reforms, because this moment is not unique, but our response needs to be different, and we must leave behind the inequality, racial disparity, old models and practices, and vote for Intro 831 as a new, bold, and necessary tool to do just that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Zach, and then Sophia.
Hi, good afternoon. I’m Zachary Katz Nelson, Executive Director of the Litman Commission. Thank you so much for holding this hearing today. You know, until the day that Rikers closes, absolutely everything possible needs to be done to make sure that people are safe at Rikers, transgender folks, gender expansive people are safe at Rikers. I want to focus, though, today on steps that we can take to make sure that people aren’t at Rikers in the first place. You know, last year, the Litman Commission, together with WCJA and partners at the Data Collaborator for Justice and the Center for Justice Innovation, put out a report called “The Path to Under 100,” to reduce the population of people at Rosies and trans folks at other places as well, to make sure that there were fewer, as few people as possible, safely incarcerated in the jails. And one of the bills today, Intro 831, as Sharon was just discussing, picks up on one of our recommendations and pushes forward this idea of a database and resource navigators. We think that’s absolutely essential. But the database navigators will be bolstered in their efficiency, if we can also ensure that people have early holistic assessments. Basically, if we can find out as early as possible in somebody’s incarceration about mental health issues, about their experiences of abuse, we can try and ensure that they are connected as early as possible with service providers and diverted out of Rikers. So often now, those types of assessments are done only ad hoc and months into someone’s time in incarceration. We shouldn’t have to wait. No one should have to wait. What I would also say is Chair Rivera, as you know well, a population review team dedicated to gender expansive people would be critically utilized, critically needed, to ensure that people’s cases get resolved and people get diverted out of Rikers as soon as possible. And finally, as we head into budget season, I would just ask that you fully fund our city’s gender-responsive, community-based programs that are proven to cut recidivism and put people on the path to success, that cost far less than what we spend on Rikers with far better results. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sophia?
Hi, my name is Sophia Paul, and I was asked to testify by Mick Kincaid and Dr. Rachel Golden, and I am testifying on behalf of an anonymous incarcerated client for Legal Aid Society. I am a transgender woman. In 2021, I got arrested and was held in the New York City jails. I told everyone that I needed to be housed safely in the women’s jail, and eventually the department moved me to the RMSC. I served my time at RMSC and came home. In the spring of 2022, I was arrested again. I told everyone that I am a transgender woman and need to be housed in a women’s jail. But instead of being brought back to RMSC, I was brought to EMTC for men’s intake, and then eventually placed in men’s housing. I kept telling everyone that this wasn’t safe. In June of 2022, I was attacked in my cell. It was the morning, and I was still in bed, under my covers, and asleep. The door to my cell had been opened, and the man in the unit entered and cut my leg with something sharp. They knew I was different, and they didn’t want me there. I had been requesting women’s housing so many times, but I never heard anything back. After the attack, I called Legal Aid’s Prisoners Rights Project and asked them to help me. I didn’t think I needed to do that earlier, because I thought the department would correct this. They knew I was housed as a woman before. I was asking to be housed as a woman again. Nothing had changed. But when I was attacked, I knew I needed help. I was so tired. To survive in the men’s jail, I was covering up who I was, trying to act tough, but it hurt me to do this. It’s not who I am. I called Legal Aid and told them I needed help. I couldn’t do this alone. It took Legal Aid a week of advocacy before the department set someone to come to the men’s jail. When they came, all they did was give me an application for gender-affirming housing. I was pretty upset. I was cut in my sleep by someone who hated me for being me, and all the department did was give me paperwork. I told them they had housed me as a female before. I was told it didn’t matter, and I needed to fill out the paperwork again.
Time expired.
I filled out my application and turned it in. After another two weeks, they finally moved me to RMSC. This was now three weeks after I was attacked, but even then, they got it wrong. When they moved me, they put me into the Special Considerations Unit. That’s supposed to be a voluntary unit, you have to choose to go there. I hadn’t chosen it or asked for it. Last time I was at RMSC, I was in general population like any other woman. I knew I could do it. It was another week of my attorneys advocating for me before I was finally moved to general population. I’m still there now, but I know that none of this is certain, and I worry every day that I might be moved again. Thank you.
Thank you to this panel for their testimony. Thank you very much. I’m going to call up the next panel. We have Ali Bohm, Sarah DeVita, Mariana Crissiliou, Natalie Fiorenzo, and Lucas Marquez. And again, you’ll hear the buzzer when the two minutes is up. If you could just finish your, wrap up your last thought. And would you like to start? Just make sure your mic’s on. Yeah, make sure the little, the red light is on.
Good afternoon, Chairpersons Rivera, Caban, and esteemed members of the committee. My name is Mariana Crissiliou. I’m the Assistant Director of the Behavioral Health Services Unit at the Center for Community Alternatives, and I would like to highlight accounts from our celebrated and respected participants on the positive impact of gender-specific programming. So our organization is a nonprofit agency that provides reintegrated justice and offers alternatives to incarceration services. We operate several alternative to detention and incarceration programs, including the Crossroads to Recovery for Women program. Participants self-identify at intake and choose where they would like to be and where they feel most comfortable. Crossroads to Recovery is an oasis licensed outpatient substance use treatment program offering trauma-informed, gender-specific, and client-centered services. We serve women from all walks of life, including returning citizens for local, state, and federal facilities, women engaging in the Work Release Program Edge Chrome Residential Treatment Facility, participants with pending court charges, and those seeking medication-assisted services. Members of our community seek comprehensive and holistic services, including individual and group counseling, mental health support, cognitive behavioral interventions, health education, HIV and hepatitis C testing, core advocacy services, and medication-assisted treatment services. Our approach is tailored to meet the unique needs of participants and support them as individuals as they strive to improve their health and wellness and live self-directed lives and recognize their full potential. The women in our program who self-identify based on gender identity and expression often express that they feel supported by the services, noting that they benefit from a safe environment to connect with one another, to discuss coping skills, to process emotions, and be empowered in their recovery. They find that the benefits by exploring what it means to be in recovery, discussing triggers. Many of our participants voice new understanding of the changes they experience while in recovery, including post-traumatic growth, increased self-awareness, and higher understanding of their own emotions. And of particular significance, our women voice that they have found increased safety in relationships, both within the program and their personal lives, as they advance in their recovery and seek to build further upon their successes. They continually show great resilience, reflection, and perseverance, and we, as providers, are honored to bear witness to their hard-won growth and transformation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. We look forward to continuing to provide gender-specific services for women and advocating for services and resources for the community.
Good afternoon. My name is Lucas Marquez. My pronouns are he, they, and I’m the Associate Director of Civil Rights and Law Reform at Brooklyn Defender Services and a very new member of the task force. The Department’s entrenched resistance to improve the treatment of trans and gender expansive people in custody and to work with the task force means it is unable to safely and humanely house TGNC and NBI people at all. The city must release all people and decarcerate the jails, including all trans and gender expansive people. The lack of transparency and trans competency around the housing application process continues, and it puts people in danger and exacerbates mental health concerns. It is our experience that that process is confusing, convoluted, and delayed. I’d like to use my time to discuss one example of one of the people that we represent, Ms. Harrison, a transgender woman that was highlighted in the city. After twice being assaulted and groped in men’s jails, she requested a housing transfer. While waiting for the department’s housing determination, she continued to face harassment and threats, such that correctional officers locked her in her cell for her safety for several days, and she struggled to get enough food and water. It was like she was being punished. The stress and isolation led her to begin cutting herself. She was put on suicide watch, but was not transferred units. Ms. Harrison and her BDS attorney repeatedly requested a transfer into West Facility, a medical unit, and DOC’s LGBTQ+ Affairs Unit advocated on her behalf. Nonetheless, 12 days later, after the self-harm occurred, Ms. Harrison was told DOC denied her request. The next day, desperate to get out of the men’s jail, she ingested batteries. In response, the department moved her around various men’s jails, causing her mental health to worsen. She applied for housing at RMSC. Three weeks later, without being moved, Ms. Harrison attempted suicide with the blade of another shaving razor. It was only after multiple incidents of self-harm, a suicide attempt, clear indications of mental health concerns, and months of abuse and assault in men’s jails, that Ms. Harrison was finally moved out of the jails into RMSC. When she was moved, she said she felt like a heavy load was lifted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah DeVita. I use she or they pronouns, and I’m a staff attorney with the Legal Aid Society and the LGBTQ Law and Policy Unit, former public defender with Legal Aid in Brooklyn. Legal Aid has submitted written testimony outlining our support for the work and recommendations of the task force, as well as our positions on the bills before the council today. We also shared a number of stories, both today in testimony and in our report. So I would also like to use my time today to respond to the DOC and CHS testimony. Unlike DOC, I am prepared today with some data of clients that I work with. I personally work with, currently work with 13 TGNC, NBI individuals in DOC custody. That doesn’t include other clients that my other colleagues in my unit, the Prisoners Rights Project, and our online defenders are representing. Of them, 10 identify as trans women, and three identify as non-binary. All of them have disclosed this to DOC. Five individuals are at RMSC. Four of those individuals were originally brought to male facilities, and it took anywhere from two to four weeks to be brought to Rosies. Only one was brought directly to RMSC. Three individuals are at male facilities after being transferred from RMSC involuntarily, and we know of a few more that that has also occurred with. Four have been continuously been denied housing at RMSC, some of these many times over the three years that they have been detained. One is, only one is okay in being in a men’s facility, but is trying to get into a PC unit, a protective care unit where they will feel safe. In terms of a steady point of contact at DOC, we have tried to figure out ourselves who this would be. We’ve not received any notification of changes in staff until we get emails that bounce back. In the month of January, I have personally sent 11 emails to DOC, including to Pria, the LGBTQ+ Affairs, Legal, and any other contact we have been encouraged to use. I received, I did not receive a single response in the month of January. Of these, three were follow-up emails for clients that I had sent previous. In terms of people not being moved for disciplinary reasons, again, we know of four of them. again, we know of four to five individuals in this last year that were moved for disciplinary measures from RMSC to the men's facilities. Access to gender-affirming care, only facilities, only certain facilities have quality access to affirming care, that being, in our experience, RMSC and AMKC sometimes. Note, I would note also that in reviewing medical records, our clients are often misgendered within the records, even when other providers refer to our clients correctly. Just briefly on the issue of the securing order, I would say that there's a big problem in the courts with securing order. However, we often will contact DOC directly from intake, from the arraignment, or I will call them myself and let them know if someone that's coming. Even in those instances, they're not able to divert that person, or they refuse to. One time where we did get a commitment from DOC to divert our client to the female facility, a deputy commissioner interceded, and that individual ended up in a men's facility. And finally, I just want to mention that there was reference to community support when someone is applying for a reconsideration form. What DOC is saying is provide proof from the community that you are in fact trans, that you do in fact have the identity that you are saying to DOC that you have. They're asking for letters of reference to your transness, and I just want to make sure that it's clear that that's what they're referring to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ali Beaum. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a policy counsel of the NYCLU. The NYCLU is deeply grateful to the members of the task force for the critical work they undertook to document a crisis at Rikers and for their thoughtful recommendations which the NYCLU supports. Thank you also to those who've shared stories today. Because the NYCLU represents transgender individuals who are or have been incarcerated in New York State, task force members asked us to share our experiences and lessons learned from outside of the city. For example, the NYCLU represents Jenna Faith, a transgender woman who was incarcerated in a men's general population unit in Steuben County in a case brought jointly with Tildaf and Baker Holstetler. I knew I was gonna mispronounce that firm's name. Following gross mistreatment in the men's facility, Jenna settled with Steuben County, and the jail agreed to presumptively house people consistently with their gender identities with a list of reasons that cannot be used as the basis for a denial. Ensure that staff at the jail respect a person's self-identified gender identity in all other contexts, including name and pronoun use and searches. Ensure access to clothing, toiletry items, and grooming standards consistent with a person's gender identity. Ensure access to medical care consistent with a person's gender identity. There is every reason to believe that these protections will be effective and workable in New York City. The New York State Sheriff's Association was involved in negotiating the settlement and ultimately signed off on the Steuben County policy. Moreover, Connecticut, Massachusetts, and California have enacted similar protections legislatively, and New Jersey agreed to similar policy in a settlement to litigation. What's more, these protections are required by the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which prohibits cruel and unusual punishment, as well as by the New York State Human Rights Law and other state civil rights laws. Indeed, the U.S. Department of Justice has interpreted the Eighth Amendment to require that TGNC NBI individuals who are incarcerated be housed in facilities that align with their gender identities where necessary to provide reasonable safety. Furthermore, the Equal Protection Clause of the U.S. Constitution prohibits treating transgender people differently than cisgender people without a compelling justification, and courts have applied this rule in the context of housing in prisons and jails. For these reasons, the NYCLU strongly supports REZO 458 calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Gender Identity Respect Dignity and Safety Act. The NYCLU also supports the task force's edits to Intro 355. While we are grateful for the spirit of the introduction, we are deeply concerned that the resolution is drafted would fail to keep transgender, gender nonconforming, non-binary, and intersex people who are incarcerated safe. We've offered specific recommendations for several of the proposals in our written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and for your consideration of this critically important issue. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much for your feedback on the legislation and for your comments on the testimony that was given today. I know we have Natalie. So what I would ask is, did you have any questions? No, no, go ahead. I'm gonna switch the panel.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna actually thank this panel. Natalie, if it's okay, I'm gonna bring you up, and then I'm gonna invite the remaining people that are in person to join you. Yeah? Okay. Thank you to this panel. Thank you, it's a pleasure to work with all of you. It really is. So I'm gonna ask who is here in person to join this last panel. I believe Chaplain Dr. Victoria Phillips, as well as Raul Rivera. And we do have two people joining us via Zoom. Helen Skipper and Kelly Grace Price. So if we can hear from Natalie, Dr. V., Raul, Kelly Grace Price, and then Helen Skipper, and that'll be the last panel for today. Oh, that's okay. You gave him the slip? Excuse me, one second to this panel. If you give me one minute. All right, my apologies. If there is anyone here that would like to testify, please know that you will get your moment, and I apologize for any technical discrepancies. How many are? All right, if we could get one more chair up, and then we can fit everybody, and we'll make this the last panel while also including two people via Zoom, of course. And Natalie, please know we're gonna start with you. As soon as we get settled. So again, we're gonna go with Natalie, then Dr. V., then Raul Rivera, then Kelly Grace Price, then Helen Skipper, and then I'm gonna include the other names that I've just received, okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Natalie Fiorenzo. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a correction specialist at New York County Defender Services and also a new member of the TGNC NBI Task Force. The conditions at Rikers Island are deplorable, no matter who you are. I'm sure everyone in this room can agree to that. But those will be affected most by the rampant dysfunction are our clients who are the most vulnerable, the most pushed to the margins of society. It's clear from the task force's report, from everyone who's testified today, and from conversations I've personally had with clients that transgender, non-gender conforming, non-binary, and intersex detainees on Rikers Island are not safe. On the agenda today are various introductions and resolutions to legislation that are crucial to the respect, livelihoods, and overall well-being of our TGNC NBI clients on Rikers. With the caveat that while the sentiments of these legislations are well-intentioned, I urge you to please incorporate the task force's input on everything that they've said today. I would like to speak today specifically in support of the task force's edited version of Councilmember Powers' Intro 728. I assume you've all seen the article that came out yesterday about the virtual disappearance of LGBTQ services available on Rikers ever since Melina has become commissioner there. The results of this were highlighted by the story of Tamara Harrison, who committed self-harm multiple times during abuse that she was facing, being housed at a male facility, two different male facilities. In my experience speaking with our transgender women clients, 100% of them who were placed at a male facility before being sent to Rosie's were sexually assaulted or physically assaulted. 100% of them. Some of them to this day are still at a male facility while we are trying our best to get them housed properly. One of those clients explained to me that she informed officers at the precinct, courtroom staff, and DOC that she was a trans woman, had previously been at Rosie's, and she was still sent to the male facility where she was physically assaulted. I urge you to think about all of these accounts when you decide how to vote on Intro 728 and REZO 458. I'm almost finished. Thank you. Male facilities are not as safe and not a viable option for anyone who says that they need to be housed in a female facility. Housing detainees according to their gender identity is the only way to prevent attacks on transgender, non-gender conforming, or non-binary or intersex folks in male facilities from happening going forward. This is exactly why the task force's version of Intro 728 is so important, but only with those edits will the legislation be strong enough to actually give our clients agency to be housed where they need to be housed to be safe. The task force is made up of many people who are transgender, non-binary, or non-gender conforming themselves, and their edits are informed not only by their lived experiences, but folks on Rikers Island now undergoing these preventable violent issues firsthand. If you do want a real solution, if you want increased support for this community, please incorporate the edits that the task force has brought to you and pass Intro 728 as well as Resolution 458, and do not let our clients suffer any longer. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the amendments. Dr. V.?
Peace and blessings, everyone. Chairs Rivera and Caban, thank you so much and all other council members. I'm Chaplain Dr. Victoria Phillips, co-chair to New York City DOC Young Adult Task Force. Yet another task force with the commissioner has fallen short in actively engaging local experts and residents in the New York City impacted communities. I'm the founder and CEO of Visionary Ministries, and I worked for the past eight years at the Mental Health Project Urban Justice Center. I'm a member of many coalitions, but today I'm here representing the Justice for Women Task Force, and as a longstanding member of the Jails Action Coalition, I can go back at least 12 years on the record of speaking on matters behind the walls and even troubles amongst the TGNC NBI population. There is no perfect system. Only the rule of law keeps us safe. We are human beings, and we all deserve to live with dignity before, during, and after detainment and incarceration. New York releases approximately 1,500 women from prison each year, according to the Prison Policy Initiative. While women have unique reentry experiences and needs, unfortunately, reentry resources are still largely designed for men. Intro 831 will assist in providing referrals to appropriate programs to support safe, successful diversion and reentry. People presenting similar to Mr. Carter, who died less than 48 hours at Rikers in 2022, would have been diverted after countless city agencies failed him. Over 80% of Rosie's population has a mental health concern, so thank you all for today. I'd like to address some things quickly about today's hearing. Commissioner Melina stated new recruits were trained on new programs, yet I want to raise the concern of new recruits being trained on jailing by old staff that them themselves need culture change. I've raised on the record my concerns in the past, but I think it's important to highlight today that it's cute to run a list of titles, but I'm more concerned with numbers. How many officers assigned directly to housing units in areas with the population are actually trained? When, what, and refreshers are actually needed? Seven years ago, I begged city council, I'm almost done, for more funding to expand DOI, BOC programming, and for more officers due to them working through tours. I too questioned BOC last year and the year before on where they were during the pandemic, but to say none of them went to the jail for two years is a stretch. It's an actual lie on the record, and I just want to state that. Lastly, I'll say surveys are great, but let's find out if more than if they are happy or sad. Let's see if they know their rights. Let's ask, do they have access to medical and mental health services in the timely matter? Do they feel safe? Who will conduct these surveys? Who collects the data? Don't just do a survey for sake of saying that you created one. And the commissioner, when he answered the process of requesting housing, think of the grieving process and how that fails in DOC today. Now just think, a leader, the commissioner, didn't even have clear data for about 50 people today under his authority, yet he told you DOC is leading the nation. DOC has never liked my questions in the boardrooms, at the advisory, or the task force meeting. They bully advocates, and I'll have none of that. So I believe what Meek was saying earlier today about not feeling comfortable while giving out this expertise. And I'll finish with saying Commissioner Melina has no respect for those directly impacted or leadership. It's clear with his respect for BOC's oversight. And I want to highlight that several individuals on BOC have experience on classification, security, and jail management. He would know that if he knew the history of the board members. And last year, I actually told him that a warden reached out to me regarding a discharge occurring because no one in DOC's discharge had actually completed the discharge needed. And to this day, he has never asked me what occurred after that. Only complaint that a warden actually reached out to me. So I say all of this on the record to show city council that he does not want people that have the experience and the expertise around him that he has not chosen to be in a certain position. He does not like leadership or directives coming from anyone outside of his intermediate circle, and to me, that's signs of a narcissist, and we do not have time for a narc to be leading DOC. We need to preserve life, and I want to highlight as I close out, there's an army, Brett, I was taught that you, when the platoon leave, you bring everybody in that platoon back. So until we stop remanding people in the courtrooms, and until we stop allowing people to be violated by the probation officers, I'm going to be a part of every conversation about a borough-based jail because we need to close Rikers, but my community members' lives matter at all times. Peace and blessings.
Thank you, Dr. V. Raul?
Your turn?
Yes. I'll stand for this. My name is Raul Rivera. I'm a Bronx native. I'm Puerto Rican. Councilmember, you didn't show face. When we reach out to you and other councilmembers, you didn't show face. You know what's happening to the Puerto Rican community. The DOT is bigoted towards the Boricua. It's bigoted to the Puerto Rican here in New York. They're taking down our name, our signs, and you know this. To the gay community, I don't think you should expect anything from this committee. It's a farce. They don't speak up for their people. Kalina Rivera is Puerto Rican. Caban is Puerto Rican. We got many Puerto Ricans in this council, and they're not hearing the cry of the Puerto Rican. If you can't defend your people, believe me, you can't defend anyone. That's what I have to say. We showing face. You should have showed face. Did I text you or not? Did you know about what happened? Yes or no? You know what happened?
Here's what I'm gonna say.
You know. You know what happened? It's yes or no? I'm asking you, yes or no?
You are here. I hope that you have some sort of testimony.
I'm giving my testimony. Don't interrupt. You know what happened? You know what happened?
Sir, hang on.
You didn't stand. Don't interrupt.
Hang on. You're being...
Don't interrupt. This is my testimony. Don't interrupt.
You're gonna get 30 seconds to finish your testimony?
I don't want to be interrupted. I don't want to be interrupted.
You have 27 seconds, so go ahead.
You are not defending your people. Don't pretend that you could defend your people. Huh? You're not doing it. You're not defending your people. You're not gonna be able to defend anybody. New York City, hear the cry of the Puerto Rican. Puerto Ricano, defiende lo tuyo. Boricua! Phonies! I keep it real.
Let's go to Kelly. Let's go to Kelly Brace. Thank you for your testimony, Kelly Grace Price. You have, thank you for your time. We're moving on.
Oh my God, from the heights, vila Boricua! Thank you so much. It's Kelly Grace Price from Close Rosie's. I, um, thank you for this hearing. Thank you, Councilmember Caban and Rivera, for sitting through this hearing. I'll turn in my written testimony, as you know I always do. And please, I beg your pardon, I never turn on my camera because I have such poor Wi-Fi. I want to just focus, I just want to focus in on what the commissioner was saying about aligning the Board of Correction with the New York City Charter. As you know, Councilmember Caban and Rivera, the BOC and the BOC Charter is something that I talk about all the time. And I want to be, can you hear me? I hear other people talking. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I beg your pardon. I want to be very clear about the New York City Charter and what it says about the Board of Correction and its oversight capabilities and powers imbued in it by the Charter. I have spoken for a long time about how the Charter has been ignored regarding the appointment process of the Board of Correction, and I'd like the city to review that, but that's not what I want to focus on today. I want to focus specifically on what Commissioner Melina said about... I want to focus specifically on what Commissioner Melina said about aligning the New York City Charter. Specifically, the Charter says, "The Board, or by any written designation of the Board, any member of it, the Executive Director or other employees, shall have the following powers and duties." The inspection, the number one point in the Charter that the Board has is that it has the inspection and visitation at any time of all institutions and facilities under the jurisdiction of the department. Now, "at any time" is very clear. The language is very clear. It's not at the leisure of the department or when the department wants to provide access. It's "at any time." The language of the Charter has been misappropriated by people within the DOC constantly to appoint people when they don't need to be appointed. I don't know if you've noticed, but we lost Stephen Safran.
Time's expired.
I'll, of course, put all this in my written testimony.
But please, no, please, I want to give you some additional time since you were interrupted.
You know, I, I, this is the point I wanted to make orally, and I will turn in my extensive written testimony about the different bills and how legislation in the past hasn't been adhered to. I've had a big problem this past week. Jeremy knows, and Councilmember Caban knows, I've been fighting with the DOC and the Law Department about data, but specifically about the Charter, we need to make sure that we hold Commissioner Melina to exactly what he said today. He wants to abide by the New York City Charter. So please, don't let Brendan McGuire or any other Pree Brera alum wave around his infamy and try and hoodwink you on what the Charter means. The Charter is very specific. Please pay attention to it, and I will detail arguments that you can use to dispute this attack on the BOC's mandate for oversight of the DOC in my testimony. Thank you so much for listening to me. I'm tired of the sound of my voice. Thank you for this hearing. I'm exhausted.
Thank you for your testimony, and we appreciate that because we, we know we have the power to legislate change, but for the Commissioner to say that he was being, going aligned with the Charter and restricting access just doesn't really make a lot of sense to us here. So thank you for that. I'm going to go to Helen Skipper on Zoom.
I am here. I am here. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Helen Skipper. I am speaking on behalf of WCJA, on behalf of the Justice for Women Task Force, on behalf of the LGBTQ GNC NBI Reentry Task Force, and most importantly, on behalf of myself, someone with lived experiences. From the age of 17 until my early 40s, I cycled in and out of Rikers Island. I grew up on the Rose M. Singer Center. So for 25 years, I was on the hamster wheel of recidivism. I speak strongly for the passing of Intro 728 and other bills introduced today. As a criminologist, as a lived experiences scholar, the criminal justice system is not built for women or gender expansive folk. We need these intros. We need these resources. We need housing appropriate for how we identify ourselves. We need the Resource Navigator program. We need a database of alternatives to incarceration for women and gender expansive folk. The criminal justice system was never built to house us, to provide services for us. We also need more people of lived experiences sitting on the council. Sometime last year, I was approached about being on the council. I don't know what happened with that, but you need more people with lived experiences. Those who are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. Please afford the possibility of passing these intros as we look at the possibility, as we look at the opportunities that are in front of us. Women were not meant to be in the criminal justice system. Please afford these [inaudible] and approving this legislation. Please look at the validity of lived experience. You have had all of these testimonies laid before you. Look at the data. Look at the research. Look at the testimonies. Intro 728, intro 30.
Thank you. Time has expired.
Thank you, but let me also say that for the testimony, and I've been on camera for the whole day, all of the testimony was much longer than the two or three minutes you are affording us now. Why are you shutting us down now? Please think about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we did allow the TGNC NBI Task Force to get, give more time to respond since they are the title of the hearing. So we try to keep it typically to two minutes. As you can see, I'm a little soft on the timer, but that's because I appreciate you all so very much. All right, so I want to, I want to recognize the following people registered to testify. We have Leah Faria, Roslyn Smith, Kelly Breem, Kiara St. James, and Candra Clark. We have been joined by Roslyn Smith, Kelly Breem, and Leah Faria, and Roslyn, would you like to begin?
Thank you. My name is Roslyn Smith, and I am the Beyond Incarceration Program Manager for V-Day, a global organization that vows to end violence against all women and girls. I'm also a member of WCJA Task Force. I served 39 years and five months in prison and 18 months on Rikers Island, and I'm here to testify on behalf of the Resource Navigator Intro Number 831. This bill is important to me because women and gender expansive people are left out of the conversations and do not receive the needed services to address their needs while incarcerated or upon reentry. Women have been incarcerated at nearly five times a higher rate in 2020 than in 1980 when I was incarcerated. In my capacity as an advocate, I have visited Rosie's recently, and nothing much has changed. We can and should do better to help people succeed before, during, and upon release from prisons and jails. Most of us are poor, people of color, survivors of violence and trauma, and suffer from mental and physical health illnesses as well as substance use, and have been locked out of medical, educational, vocational, and economical opportunities. To help us succeed, we need to be provided with resources that address our unique needs and get supportive help while incarcerated or detained to address the issues that brought us there in the first place. We need to have wraparound services from the start, and when we are preparing for release, we need safe housing, jobs that will pay us a living wage, therapeutic programs, physical and mental health, resources and trauma centers, and services to access and help with childcare. We need our voices to be heard so we can heal and succeed to be the best of our abilities while incarcerated and once we are released. If a program like this, Intro 831, would have been available to me while I was incarcerated, it would have helped me navigate my reentry process much better without all the setbacks I encountered and prepared me for success instead of failure. I hope this bill continues to garner support so that women and gender expansive people impacted by the injustice system will receive the resources they need and be treated with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, thank you so much, Chair Rivera and Councilwoman Caban. David Carr, I am his constituent. He's not here. Am I surprised? My name is Kelly Breem. I currently am a graduate-level student of social work. I'm also an executive in the business sector for 20 years. I am part of the Justice for Women Task Force and Beyond Rosie's campaign. I am also a formerly incarcerated woman, trafficking survivor, and chronic gender abuse survivor. As I heard testimony today, I could only think, my God, why are we having this conversation? Over and over and over, and the insanity cycle of doing the same thing every single time expecting different results is seen every single decade, and every single decade it doesn't get better, it gets worse. I see various TGNC NBI, did I get it right? I'm sorry, and women on Rikers. I go back to give back what was given to me because I would not be here today if it wasn't for my sisters who uplifted me and gave me hope and inspiration that I am more that the labels and the stigma and the stereotypes that not only DOC, PD, court systems said that I wasn't worthy. And as I listen today, the level of smart beauty leaves me utterly speechless, and I'm here to advocate for Intro 831, a Resource Navigator, because half the women and the gender expansive don't even belong on Rikers. It should be diversion from the get-go, and through education and resources that are appropriate, then maybe we would stop having these conversations of abuse, oppression, and continual perpetuated vileness. And the last thing I want to say, as my own story is, I was trafficked, and I had no housing, no clothing, no money. I couldn't put two sentences together, and they put me in a co-ed when I was pushed out the window fly birdie into a co-ed contracted, short-term residential. And if you're talking about going from the frying pan into the fire, I was thrown into the wolf's den only to continue the abuse continually. And thank you so much for hearing me, and thank you so much, everyone, for your testimony. It's truly filled my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that about your colleagues. Leah?
Good afternoon, Chair Rivera, Chair Caban, and the rest of the City Council. My name is Leah Faria, and I am the Director of Community Liaisons and organizing with the Women's Community Justice Association, also known as WCJA, where our focus is decarceration. I served 22 years incarcerated, with three of those years served on Rikers Island. With no previous criminal record, I could have been better served by receiving an alternative program located in my community, which would have also allowed me the opportunity to stay with my young son and family. I have, I could have been able to better advocate for myself in court, and my attorney would have been able to push for an alternative program versus me sitting in jail and prison, which is also a situation where I could have, where I was further traumatized. As an advocate, I currently visit Rosie's, the Rose M. Singer Center, twice a month where I'm able to sit with the women and gender expansive people, listening and relating to their issues and concerns. Many are suffering from substance abuse, many are mothers, many are first-time offenders, and they would be better served in the community where they can receive the help they actually need instead of being coerced into taking plea deal agreements that are an injustice to them, their loved ones, and their communities. Intro 831 is important because it would help women and gender expansive people get the necessary help they actually need instead of being detained and re-traumatized. This Resource Navigator bill is a way to safely decarcerate and help the city as well as the community reaches goals of lowering the population, which is needed to actually close Rikers Island. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you to this panel very much for staying with us since 10:00 a.m., for your expertise, for your passion, for your commitment in all that you do. It's, it's, thank you. So with that, I don't, if there are any, if there's anyone else in these chambers that would like to testify, please let us know before we adjourn. Okay. Thanks again to this panel. I'll turn it to Chair Caban. Would you like to say something in closing?
Yes, I mean, I just simply want to reiterate my gratitude for the personal testimonies for the folks who spoke on behalf of others who are unable to give their own testimony, for the work of the Task Force. You know, as a, as a queer Latina former public defender, these are issues that I care deeply, deeply about, and so I just want to, on the record, reaffirm my commitment to partnering with y'all to make sure that we get the results that you need. I have, I've read your, your report from the Task Force cover to cover, and I'm here to, to follow up on anything you need. We are both allies to that respect, and I just, I want to thank you for the lifesaving work that y'all do. So I appreciate y'all, and I appreciate you being here all day.
Yes, as many of you heard, today's oversight hearing has laid bare the horrific treatment of TGNC NBI individuals within the Department of Correction. The DOC has continued to fail to provide safe and respectful housing, medical care, and support, which has resulted in the tragic deaths of individuals like Leileen Polanco and the suffering of countless others. So as Chair of the Criminal Justice Committee, and I want to thank Chair Caban for joining me in this hearing. We are absolutely just enraged by the DOC's lack of action and their commitment to addressing the issues with the expertise just in this very room, let alone across the city. The testimony and evidence presented today shaped by the lived experiences, the expertise of the TGNC NBI community, it leaves no room for doubt that change has to happen. This is not a seasonal conversation. We continue to bring these issues up in this hearing, and of course, will continue to do so, and I'm thankful for my partnership with Chair Caban. Yet we saw that the DOC continues to resist transparency, they continue to resist accountability, choosing instead to protect its own interests and neglect the well-being of those in its custody. And that, to me, is the most alarming. So this, this council will continue to work with the Task Force members. I want to thank you for all the time that you gave us today for that report. For everyone who represented someone else who could not be here because of access, privilege, fear, thank you, and thank you for holding us accountable to push for progress and real reform. And of course, I want to thank the entire TGNC NBI community for sharing their own lived experiences and expertise, and for today, for being here with us for so long. Thank you very much. And with that, we adjourn. Thank you to the